Okay, good evening. Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, May 8th, 2018 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Here.
Trustee Doris Chevitz?
Here.
Supervisor Heisey?
Here.
Treasurer Clinton?
Here.
Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Kirmey?
Here.
Trustee Dempsey?
Present.
All present, we have a call.
Alrighty, Item B is the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we welcome back Dorian Thompson, who's home from college, and if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He said that with authority, that's good. Okay, next up is a proclamation to recognize International Firefighters' Day. This started on May 4th, and this is our first opportunity to officially recognize our firefighters. Who will be doing the honors? Well, they're on a run, probably. So Chief, we're gonna have to have you do it.
We could do something ceremonial at that point.
Okay, so, this is our annual proclamation for Plymouth Township firefighters. International Firefighters' Day is May 4th, but of course, tonight's our first opportunity. Don't worry, I will not read the entire proclamation, but it certainly underscores our deep love and respect for everything that you do and all the guys who work under your command in the fire department, EMS. They do a terrific job, I think, under very difficult situations, and you are thought of and appreciated every day. If the firefighters do arrive, we might, huh? Might get a picture of them later on. Okay, alright, let's move on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move for approval of the agenda for Tuesday, May 8th, 2018.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D is approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. We spend a lot of money with auto parts between the police and the fire fixing our old vehicles. Have we looked at the new Plymouth Township auto supply store as another place to go, give the money to a Plymouth Township business?
We have a long withstanding operation with the NAPA dealer. We probably could look at them, but at this point, we have not.
They had promised to give us the same kind of pricing that we're getting elsewhere, and we can keep the money in the township.
I will go meet with them. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion's made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, next, this is public comments and questions. As you know, this is not the only opportunity during the night to do public comments, so we do encourage comments on all agenda items, as long as you're relevant to the item at hand. There will be also another comment, period, at the end of the meeting, so this is not your only opportunity. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. My name is Bill Pratt. I live at 44967 Governor Bradford in the Township. I have been on the Planning Commission for the last 18 years, and most recently was appointed the Planning Commission's liaison to the Zoning Board of Appeals last year. And it is in that capacity that I rise to try to bring some attention to an issue with the zoning ordinance itself, and that is, in our residential districts, zoning ordinance Section 26, which is the general rules for residential districts, has in it a restriction on rear yard fences at four feet high. And what I can tell you about that is, when I got on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I noticed after a few meetings that probably 75% of our variance requests have to do with this particular zoning ordinance, or portion of the zoning ordinance. It just is my suggestion to you that the Township authorized the planners to take a look at that section. My thought process is this, that when that section, I happen to have been on the Planning Commission when the zoning ordinance 99 was completely rewritten in the year 2000 and 2001, and I can tell you that that section was never touched during that rewrite. So that section is very old, and considers the ability, or the materials and so forth, of 1960s. So I think it needs to be updated. That's my thought process. I would like to hear the trustees' views on that. I know Trustee Doris Chevitz, who is going to be speaking to this in the trustee comments section as well, and I just think we need to take a look at it, and that's just my feeling. And so, that's why I'm here. Now, the other thing I will do is I'm gonna ask you to allow me to depart, because I have another commitment this evening that I need to get to. My granddaughter is playing soccer over at Livonia Church, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I'm sure at our Planning Commission meeting next week, Commissioner Doris, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Doris Chevitz and/or trustee Doris Chevitz will allow us the insight as to what your comments to this is. I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Forgive my notes, memory's not a strong suit these days. Anyway, my name is Glenn Miller, and although I'm from Northville, I am a volunteer with the Miracle League of Plymouth. And for those of you who are not familiar with the Miracle League, it is a volunteer-driven baseball league, created to give special needs players a chance to play a game that they love but might not otherwise get a chance to play. It is pure magic to watch the smiles on the players' faces when their everyday boundaries and challenges have disappeared. This past Saturday was the opening day of our 2018 season, and on behalf of all of our volunteers, I'd like to publicly thank Supervisor Heisey for being there to throw out the first pitch and getting our season off to a successful start. And may I also say that just as he does with all Township business, he threw a perfect strike. But thank you Supervisor Heisey.
Thank you. He struck out?
That's what I heard, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? John? Stewart?
John Stewart, 34-year resident of Lake Point, 14956 Maplewood. 34-year self-employed attorney on Main Street in the city of Plymouth. Purpose of me coming here tonight, and I won't be back for this summer, because we all are aware of what's going on with social, musical activities. Two weeks from tomorrow, May 23, we have a very special speaker. This is not a service club meeting. President Montgomery, Bachelor's, magna cum laude, Penn State Economics, Masters and Doctorate, Harvard. He was the Auto Czar. He was the Director of the Auto Recovery, and was in the state a lot in 2009 and 2010. He was Chief Economist for the U.S. Department of Labor, and he was later Deputy Secretary of Labor. The Economic Club of Detroit, the Canton Chamber of Commerce, and the Livonia Chamber of Commerce called me and said, "How did you get him?" Well, I still have some friends in higher education. And he did induct a certain academic and athletic All-American last September. I hope you will come. I hope some of you will set aside the time. It's at heart. The luncheon, I had to negotiate this, is put on by the simple kitchen contained therein. Another resident, Kristen Potelinski, for $15. I would like the public to come. I would like them to ask questions. I will monitor those questions, and we are deeply privileged to have him in our community. When I went to the office at the largest Catholic church in Michigan, OLGC, with over 3,500 families, Father Ricardo said to me, "Good. You're bringing together the people of the city and the township." Naturally, that gratified me. So I'm hoping that you'll see the depth of this man, and another economics major and undergrad in addition to myself, President Conway Jeffress called me, and he says, "We want to co-sponsor this. Schoolcraft College will be there, and I would like to sit next to President Montgomery," to which I said, "Of course. We'll just have round tables with linen cloths on them, centerpieces from western Michigan, and the alumni. I believe West Graff or the Plymouth Chamber told me, 'We already have more than 65 reservations paid, so we can only take another 50, and I would hope that you would come and be well represented.'" Mayor Wolcott has also indicated to me that he will be there. Now, jumping ahead, three years ago, or back, going back actually, three years ago, I did a special program, organized a special program with my friend, Carl Grapeentine, the voice of the Michigan Marching Band for 47 years, focusing on the world-class Research University in Ann Arbor. And we had 3,000 people in Kellogg Park. In just over two months, Stewarts are usually called in when things hit bottom, we're gonna have a night featuring Michigan State University. There will be 500 band members performing in Kellogg Park, including the Plymouth Community Band of 80, the National Championship Plymouth Canton Marching Band of 200, the Plymouth Five and Drum Corps, featured guest conductor Dr. David Thornton of Michigan State, and then we're going to have three special flag bearers, Dr. Plot Curry, Dr. William Weber, and Dr. Noel Goofy, my first cousin from Wyandotte, who's now 84 and was on the 54 and 56 Rose Bowl teams, and was Deputy Secretary of Transportation for three presidents, Ward, Carter, and Reagan. So we're gonna have a special night. Now, I'm going to promise you that I'm going to stand next to trustee Doris Chevitz when there is singing throughout Kellogg Park of the absolutely beautiful alma mater, MSU Shadows, and I will do my best to keep him on key, July 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm going.
Yeah, you're going now. Hurry it, anybody else?
Good evening, Bill Carter, 45969 Green Valley Road, Plymouth. Three items that I don't see on the agenda for this evening, and hopefully you could talk about them when you talk about some comments. One is, I'm interested in what the status is of the dispute with the city as far as the firefighters' pension dispute is concerned at one, and what the status might be on number two, on the PARC with the city, where are we on that? And then, three, what the status might be for the funding or the unfunding status of our legacy cost for the employees, firefighters, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully you can touch on those during comments later on. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I do see we have some firefighters here. Gentlemen, we did give your proclamation to the chief, so if, Chief, what would you like to do?
Do you want me to take it outside?
I can take it outside, that's fine, yeah. Okay. And then that way you guys can get back to work.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Alright, let's move on to Item F1. This is the Joint Recreation Master Plan Public Hearing. Since it is a public hearing, we're gonna have to open this up like a meeting. So before you is a proposed motion in the agenda pack.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move to open the public hearing on the joint five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan between the city of Plymouth and the Charter Township of Plymouth. Public hearing is open at 7:15.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dempsey. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Doris Chevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kirmey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we are now open for a public hearing on the Recreation Master Plan. We do have two folks that have been working on this very hard for the last several months, and that's Leah Groya from Living Lab, yes, and Steve Anderson from the city.
I'd like to introduce ourselves. My name's Steve Anderson, the Recreation Director for the City of Plymouth. This is Leah Groya from the Living Lab of Detroit. She was our principal and lead consultant on the Recreation Master Plan, and she will go over a brief presentation on some of the concepts of that.
Great, thank you. Steve and I prepared about an hour of presentation, if that's okay? All right, we can go to that slide. I wanted to just touch on why communities develop five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plans briefly. A couple of reasons. First, the process that communities go through really assists in trying to document the needs and the priorities in the community. Once adopted, it can be a tool for leadership and staff to use on a regular basis. I have one in front of me, thank you. To use to, during their planning process, during the annual budgeting process, serve as a guide throughout the year. We also follow the Michigan Department of Natural Resources guidelines in the development of the plan, and because we follow their guidelines and process, once the plan is adopted, we'll file it with the state, and that will enable the Township and the city to be able to apply to the Department of Natural Resources in the future for grants, if you so wish. It's also important to note that the master plan can be amended during the five-year time period if you might have priorities that shift, goals that shift. The Department of Natural Resources has an amendment process in place, which includes holding another public hearing, not as lengthy of a process as developing the whole plan, but that option is there if opportunities or priorities might require that. I think just as important as what the purpose of the master plan is, is what it isn't. It certainly does not solve all of the issues and concerns that you're having in regular conversations about. It doesn't go into that level of detail. There's certainly quite a bit of work to continue to move forward, but what it does try to do is identify those through the process, identify what some of the priorities are, what some of the goals are, some things to focus your conversations on as you move forward. In terms of what's in the master plan, as I indicated, the Department of Natural Resources provides guidance and some requirements in terms of process and content. The five-year plan includes a brief description of the communities. It talks about the process that we underwent to develop the master plan, includes a description of the administrative structure of both communities related to Parks and Recreation, includes the inventory basis for action and action plan. During the development of the master plan, there were a number of processes that were undertaken or were included to come to some of the priorities and goal statements. Last year, as you know, under a separate project, the Township and city developed a telephone survey with Epic MRA, so we were given those results at the beginning of the planning process to review and incorporate into the master plan. The Township had an Arts Recreation and Heritage Committee report that was presented to you last year that we were given and reviewed. Two public workshops were held in January. Both the city and Township had online input opportunities that were collected. Steve came to both the commission and the board in February to discuss the project and gather input. And then the draft plan was made available on the city website and the Township website. Hard copies were both in the Township and the city beginning April 5th for review. And that is a 30-day required public review time period per the Department of Natural Resources. Last night, the city commission held their public hearing. We gave the same presentation to the commission. They held their public hearing and also recommended adoption of the plan by resolution at their meeting last night. Which brings us to tonight for your public hearing and your discussion and consideration for adoption. The action program in the master plan outlines the direction for the city and township, both individually and jointly in some instances, would like to pursue over the next five years, includes six goal statements and 29 objectives, and also includes a capital improvement priority table. I'm not gonna go through all the goal statements and all the objective statements, you've had the document in front of you, but I did want to just touch on the categories of the goals there, and there's a number of objectives that fall beneath each one of these goals. Connectivity and accessibility, natural resources, partnerships, programs, facilities, and operations, maintenance, and funding. There's also included in the action program section of the master plan, a listing of some capital priorities, and I think it's important to note that this is a guide. Approving this master plan doesn't put a stamp on all of these projects, and they're not all instantly funded. These are things for you to consider as you move forward in your work and in your budgeting processes over the next several years. I think we tried to kind of describe the action program as not being so grandiose when you put it together, that it looks like you haven't accomplished anything over the five-year period, but also to not be too narrow, that you don't leave yourselves opportunities to pursue different avenues or different funding sources if something should come up. The Department of Natural Resources, if you would submit a grant application to them in the future, they are looking to see that the project you submit for would meet one of the goals that's included in your master plan. Since the master plan was made available for public review in early April, we received a few comments, and we've proposed some edits to the master plan based on those comments, and we've summarized those here on these next couple of slides. So if you, after you've opened it up for any public comment, you've had discussion amongst yourselves tonight, if you would like to consider adoption by resolution, you can do so with any edits or amendments that you might want to make. A couple of those that we are suggesting, one is on page 10, and we clipped up in the top left-hand corner of the slide what page 10 looks like now, and the proposal is to clarify the bullet to read both contribute funding and/or facility usage to the Plymouth Council on Aging. Another proposed edit to the plan is on page 56. In early April, when we made the plan available for public review, the city commission had not completed their update of their strategic plan that's since been updated, so we'd like to put a couple of paragraphs in there to summarize that strategic plan, particularly in relation to anything that's related to Parks and Recreation. Page 39, under Other Recreation Facilities and Offerings, we'd like to add a brief paragraph, and this is a comment per the Township's Planning Commission, and it's really to note that the Township has existing residential subdivision open space throughout the community, and describe that that is common shared open space. It's not township-owned open space, but certainly it is open space available for use within a number of the neighborhoods. Along those same lines, on page 45, there is a graphic that talks about parks and acres of parkland, and we'd like to add a note to that that basically describes the same thing, that in addition, subdivisions in the Township often have larger lots, as well as common open space as part of subdivision development. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you to take any comments from the public, for you to have your discussion, and determine if you'd like to consider adoption of the master plan this evening with those edits and any others that you might like to make. If it is adopted tonight, we'll move forward with the filing process. We need to forward it to SMCOG, to Wayne County, and through the DNR's online filing system, and then the plan will be yours to use as you move forward.
Okay, the next agenda item is the approval document. Does that reference Plan as Amended, or any special language like that?
No, I think if you, whoever would make the motion, would just make the motion with edits proposed in the presentation tonight, and any others that you might have consensus on.
Okay, Steve, do you have anything? Alright, any other comments or questions from the board at this time?
On the capital page, just for format, please take out the decimal point, .00. It creates a distorting image.
Okay, no problem.
It just implies too much precision.
Yeah, okay.
And then the question, senior health and wellness center, $5 million. Tell me more about that.
Well, a recreation master plan includes items that you would like to see down the road and in the future, so it is a bit of a wish list as much as it is an inventory list. So in this particular case, we had had input at the, at the public forums and the surveys and other documents that were collected, for people who have said that we don't, we lack a really top-rate senior facility, senior center.
For exercise or for playing cards?
Well, you know, in the modern era, it's a lot more than playing cards now. You know, it is about health and wellness and exercise and physical health, mental health, and it's, I think especially with the aging baby boomers, a lot of them are no longer doing that kind of playing cards and mahjong and all of that. You know, it's now about exercise and yoga and fitness and wellness. And so, you know, the idea would be, and again, if the federal government or the state were to say, "Here's, you know, $5 million," what would we do with it? It would be, it would be neat to look at a facility that could really appeal to seniors in the 21st century and make it something that they would really be, that they would use on a much, much larger basis.
Where's the best example of a senior center in the metropolitan Detroit area? Show me, tell me what, because I'm having a hard time figuring out what it is.
I think with any of your larger municipalities, Noby is a very good one, Livonia is a good one, they have a much more broad and active senior services division. That's pretty much where you're gonna see a lot of, the bigger municipalities with bigger populations generally can accommodate those because they have a bigger population.
So the Livonia one is on Five Mile at the old Bentley facility?
That's their, well, that's a hybrid. You've got a little bit of everything. You get to that.
The, I was just at Commerce Township today, and they just renovated their, they call it a community and senior center. It has meeting rooms, a library, computer room, kind of multipurpose rooms where different activities can take place, including some light exercising. They have a full kitchen. They serve meals regularly to low-income seniors and others, and so that's one example, too. I think they can go across the gamut in terms of low-tech to high-tech.
So is this a rank ordering, or it just happens to be that's the way they?
No, no rank ordering in there. There, the only, there are some short-term, mid-term, long-term in that table, or ongoing items, so things that maybe are higher that maybe are higher priority if funding is available than others. So I think in the townships, I'm looking at the cities. The township has a number of short-term priorities. Those would be the axes in the first column there, next to each item.
Could we call these something other than priorities? Could we call them opportunities?
Certainly. Yeah. Yeah. In terms of, from the department's, the Department of Natural Resources perspective, that language would not bother them.
I would suggest that, because that would then give us an idea of what needs are and possibilities, but it doesn't necessarily say this is a requirement.
I agree. Yep, you're right.
Yeah, the terminology changes.
Because I have concern, but the wealthiest segment in this community is seniors, and you're spending the most money on them. They vote the most, and they have the most money. And we're proposing to continue that by giving them more. And I'm a senior. What's the definition of a senior?
Depends how old you are, I guess.
Well, how old do you have to be to qualify?
I think it's 65.
65?
65.
Only one or two seniors up here.
Only two, yeah. Jack's going to be 62 next week.
The senior discount, I think goes way over 65.
Okay, as the youngest guy here, are there any other questions? Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Let's see, from the public. Okay. Then we'll be looking to close the public hearing at this point.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk.
I move to close the public hearing at 7:34.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item F2. This is consideration to adopt the joint recreation master plan. We do have a sample motion in front of us, and I think as Ms. Groya pointed out, we could simply insert the words "As amended" somewhere.
Or with edits proposed in the presentation?
Sure.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt Resolution 2018-05-08-24, approving the joint resolution plan for the 2018-2022, with edits proposed in the presentation, and file the same with all appropriate governmental entities.
Okay. Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Any other comments or questions by the board? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item F3, acceptance of multi-year fiber optic line, police, lieutenant brothers.
This evening, we're asking the board to consider entering into a five-year agreement with AT&amp;T for a fiber optic line. I'll give you a quick history on it. In January, the MPSCS, the Michigan Public Safety Communication System, asked that we get off of our old T1 line that we currently have a contract with them until May of 2019 for with AT&amp;T, and go to a fiber optic line for a new software system. The radio system won't work on the T1 line after August. So they gave us the contact people, and we talked to both WOW and AT&amp;T with our specific requirements that were needed, and AT&amp;T came in at the cheapest price. So we're currently paying $623.43 a month for the T1 line with AT&amp;T and the five-year agreement for 60 months. The price will be $492.30 a month, so a savings of about $125 a month.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Bob, this is your area. What do you think?
It's a reasonable price. 500 bucks a month for a T1 is okay.
Also, you identify on, in your memo, some additional reasons about why AT&amp;T?
Yeah, we currently use them. They have a better service, 24/7 service people. Also, they're going to allow us to terminate the 2019, the contract that ends in 2019. When we migrate over, they're going to waive all the termination fees and costs for that, so.
Is the AT&amp;T business office still a mile down the road, on end of a road?
I have no idea.
Because usually the closer you are, the better service you get, right? No? Not necessarily?
Not a T1.
All right.
I mean, it's, you know, 500 bucks a month, and when you're only buying them in quantities of one, it's gig port speed, I mean, that's okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-05-08-25, authorizing the charter township of Plymouth to enter into a five-year agreement with AT&amp;T for the fiber network for the MPSCS radio system at a cost of $492.30 monthly, subject to review and approval by the township attorney.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Treasurer Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is item F4. This is the presentation by the Golf Course Committee. We have several members of the committee here tonight. I think it's up to you who you want to speak, or maybe you'll have more than one. We have three.
Four.
You have the whole committee here?
Go down. There we go. I'm Jason Winters, so we'll go through real quickly, or I guess if we go too fast, please stop us if there's any questions. We'd be glad to highlight some things, but we had a very energetic committee with a lively discussion, a couple of comments, we had five sessions, so what we present today...
You're going to have to speak closer to the mic.
Hold the one in your hand, I think, is best.
Great. Just let me know if I can't be heard again.
Before you get started, is what was handed out hard copy the same thing as nothing's different, other than the color format?
Just the color format. It should be the same. So as I was saying, we actually went over this presentation at our last public meeting, so it shouldn't be a surprise to those that have been with us. I recognize a number of faces that have been with us for the last, for our session. So as I said, we've had a good dialogue. The Billy Casper Golf Group was very transparent. We had Cindy from the township was very helpful in providing information, so I think we've got a good set of information, and just wanted to let you know what we found out and what we generally agreed upon. We didn't agree on everything, but we had, like I said, a lively debate on all the issues. So the agenda for today is, we'll give you a preview via executive summary of what we're going to talk about today. I'll go through the review of what we learned, which is mostly the numbers. I'm the numbers guy of the committee, and then Bob McCurdy, who's to my immediate right, is going to talk about the potential courses of action. He's our golf course expert. And Chris Hunter is going to finish up with timeline and next steps. He's our attorney. And while we're at it, I guess I might as well introduce the rest of our committee who's here. So we had two trustees. Jack and Bob were members of the committee, and Joanne and Andrew. I'm trying to remember Joanne and Andrew's last name to make sure that we're precise. Joanne Lamar and Andrew Malm are here as well. So Joanne or Andrew, if I misspeak, just jump in. Joanne has never been bashful, so we'll go on to the next page. So the preview, or the executive summary is this, is that the, in terms of the economics, if we continue Hilltop in its current form, the committee feels that it will require subsidization from the township. So what that means is we're at a cash deficit in terms of where we've been the last four years and where we anticipate, and that means in its current form. So, and we'll go through that a little bit. In terms of the numbers, the projection anyway is a range of $230,000 to $350,000 per year. So that includes the operating deficit as well as maintenance capital expenditures, so, and we'll get into that as well. There is some room for improvement, of course. We talked at length with the Billy Casper Golf people about, you know, what can be done, how they see things. So there will, you know, there is room for modest improvements, but we're really limited by the resources and land constraints there. So we're not just, we're not going to say there's no way to get better, but the upshot is that we anticipate a need for the township to subsidize the course going forward if, unless more dramatic changes are made. So really, the consensus we all had is that our recommendation is really hire professionals. So we think a master plan is in order. We did have the opportunity to have an architect come in and speak with our committee and give us a sense of what that could be. So our recommendation is that, you know, not only have somebody take a look at what, how the golf course could be changed, but also look at alternative uses. We're unclear, or I guess we didn't have the capacity to understand how much in resources would be needed to make that a viable golf course, and the range of alternatives is really limitless. So on that point, I'm going to jump down to the last one, is that, you know, we're going to leave it up to the, really, the township board to really put guardrails upon what those alternatives are. We talked about a number of them, but obviously some have, some can be paddleable and some can't, given what their community reaction is. Regardless of what happens there, though, the BCG contract is, 2018 is their last year, so we would recommend going forward with an RFP process, and BCG may be the management company that we'd want to partner with, but I think it, we all believe that it requires a public request for proposal process and take a look at some alternative structures as well. So we're going to get into the what we learned section. So Hilltop has been around for 90 years. It's been around for a long time. It's originally built as a nine-hole course. You know, and golf is, or at least my impression, and I think Bob concurs, is it's a challenging market right now. So there's been, you know, market saturation. There's been more courses since the '70s, and there's actually been fewer golfers. So that has caused a reduction overall in the rounds played, and we think, you know, there's also been a lack of investment as well in the course, so that hasn't helped the economics of the current situation as well. We didn't go back into ancient history, let's say, but prior to 2011, our understanding was there was a different arrangement. In fact, the Hilltop course was leased, and that meant from an economic standpoint, the township was protected economically. They got a fixed fee, and the course operator either enjoyed the profits of the course or had to absorb the losses. And it's our understanding that the operator at that time had no interest in continuing under that arrangement, which gave us the feeling that they were suffering losses. They were also not investing in the course as well. So the last bullet point there is that, under the first section, previous business models have also led to the current eroding conditions. So Billy Casper Golf, BCG, has operated the course since 2011. They're an organization that's not just here for Hilltop. They're the largest operator of municipal courses in the U.S., and they have three other, or four other municipal facilities in Michigan. The current structure is they receive a 11% of revenues management fee. So what that means for the township is we're in a position to absorb the losses or have the gains on the course. So that's, in essence, where we are now, is that we have been funding losses for the course for at least the last several years. Current agreement expires next March, and it's our understanding, looking through the agreement, that we would want to give notice of intent to renew or terminate at the end of November. So I'm going to go into the numbers a little bit here. So this is the last four years of operating results. So if you look at the very top line, that's the total rounds that the court, for rounds that have been played on the course. So it's been about averaging 23,000 a round, or for the last seven years or so. The third line down is the revenue per round. So you'll see that it's what we, what we heard was a value-oriented course. So it's actually one of the cheaper golf courses in the area, and unfortunately, that has not drawn the rounds that really make it a viable operation. So at the end of the day, for the last four years, we've had, on average, a $90,000 per year operating deficit. So that does not include the capital expenditures that we'll talk about in a second. One other note here on the bottom. In our research, we found that, for what it's worth, only about 23% of the rounds in 2017 were played by Plymouth residents in the area code 48170. So I think that includes township and city, and that's down from 26% in the prior year. The next page is, these are the BCG recommended capital expenditures. So these would not, I wouldn't characterize these as improvements. These are more maintenance capital expenditures. The first one is cart paths. So we have existing cart paths, but they're in need of repair and replacement. And as I understand it, this is sort of the midpoint. We could, you know, Billy Casper talked about expanded cart paths as well as maybe a limited scope. This is sort of the middle ground. We need to replace golf carts, so we do have existing golf carts. We have golf cart revenue in the operating numbers we showed you, but they're all in need of replacement. So this would be the expense that's not there on the operating statement. And there's other items, too. Maintenance equipment, tree work, the ordinary things you would expect from a golf course. So while we didn't assess whether the $640,000 request is good or bad, this is just BCG's recommendation as to what they need for the next four years. So on average... So on average, that's $160,000 per year, which, of course, adds to the cash flow deficit. So this next page is the BCG projections. So you'll see here, they've anticipated growth in the rounds from 25,000 this year up to 27,000 in 2020. And the bottom line is, if you include, so with those rounds, which we seem to think may be optimistic, given that we're at 23,000 rounds right now, we'd still have an operating deficit. So the average deficit from an operating standpoint is 70,000. You add in the 160,000 of capital items, you get to the 230,000 average cash use based on the BCG projections.
Did Billy Casper give you any insight as to how they think they're going to get this year 3,000 more, next year 4,500 more, and then 5,000 more golfers in that time period? They give you any indication of?
I don't recall, but I'm not sure that we really asked. I don't, do you guys remember?
It was, that's why we called the numbers optimistic.
Okay.
And also, I'll note that they were not anticipating. We had a lengthy debate about pricing. My recollection is Billy Casper really felt strongly that if we raised prices, we would reduce the number of rounds to the extent that we would lower overall revenue. So you'll see here, another assumption is that we do get a little bit of uptick in rate, but it's not dramatic. So, and a lot of things influence, particularly, you know, the number one thing is weather. You know, if we get good weather, which we haven't this year, you know, golf rounds increase. But...
That was one of my concerns, is that April has been almost a washout for golf.
I would agree. Yeah, so...
Contrary to that, I'm looking at paying $10 a round on Groupon right now, right?
$10 a round on Groupon. And that includes a cart, right?
One data point that I can add to this is that what we've, what we also learned that was really surprising was the average food and beverage sales per round was, what, $4?
$4.
So for whatever reason, you know, there's, there just hasn't been an opportunity to, you know, to upsell.
Well, I think you guys touched on it when you called it a value course. You know, I think that pretty much explains $10 rounds and $4 for whatever I'm eating and drinking is a value.
Yeah, you know, people don't hang out there, is what it says.
Exactly.
Because they don't, they really don't stay and have dinner afterwards or whatever, like you might see at some other courses, which you can, I mean, you could speculate why that is. Maybe it's because the facilities just aren't very good for it, or whatever the case may be. But not to take you off, but that, it's a really interesting conversation about price elasticity, that if you, you know, if you make it free, it'll be packed. So...
Did Billy Casper talk about soccer at all? Soccer golf?
It's nominal.
Foot golf?
The revenue is really nominal off of foot golf.
Because Fox Hills makes quite a bit of money off of foot golf, because they have a whole course devoted just to that.
Yeah, I forget. What was the number, Ben, Jason?
I don't remember getting into the specifics of that, but, you know, Billy Casper has talked about a number of different ways to enhance revenue. It's all in their best interest. You know, I don't want to defend Billy Casper Golf. I think Bob can probably speak to their performance better than I. But the incentives are there for them to grow the revenue, and they're, it would be, I don't see a scenario why they would want to do anything that would limit their top-line growth.
I know club golf is a big thing. They're pushing the night golf and, you know, all kinds of different alternatives.
So if we go to the next page, as a segue to what we think were optimistic numbers, so the first set of columns here on the left is the same as the prior page, so that's the BCG projections. What we did is said, well, let's assume that rounds are flat, and we have a flat revenue or flat fee per round, and that lends itself to more of a $290,000 per year average cash deficit. And then if things get worse progressively, you'd have even a worse problem. You'd have 355,000 per year. So, you know, our conclusion was that, you know, we think operating losses are going to continue. What the ultimate number is, we don't know, but we think it's within this range. Is there any questions on that? And I'm going to do one more page about the background. So just in summary form, we had a lot of golfers that enjoyed Hilltop show up at our meeting. And really, the summary was this, that, you know, there's a pocket of people that really enjoy the course. You know, they have challenging greens. It's a short course, but it's a tough course, and it's a good value for those people that regularly golf there. So they enjoyed their time there. Unfortunately, there's, that base is not big enough. And these same features present their own challenges and limitations. So, you know, beginning golfers can be frustrated because of the difficulty of the course, so it's not an easy course. The greens are challenging. And the pace of play can be a problem with too many poor inexperienced golfers. And, you know, I ask a lot of my neighbors and friends and associates and such, and my own focus group, a lot of people always came back to the, you know, it's a tight course, and it's, people don't feel safe, because it is tight, and there's, there's golf balls flying around, and, you know, you don't want to get hit. So for what it's worth, that's, you know, what we've heard. There was a survey done unrelated to Hilltop, and I'm not, I'm not sure how old it was. It's within the last couple of years, but we grabbed data from that. There was no financial information shared, so it was, didn't have the context of, you know, the subsidy or the fees. But, you know, of the participants in the survey, 20% did visit Hilltop, and 47% preferred that Hilltop remain open, while 29% preferred it being repurposed for other recreational purposes. So we did have that data point. We felt important to put in our presentation that we did, you know, in the course of the meetings, we did have significant public opposition regarding, you know, housing developments on the property. So that goes back to my commentary earlier about, you know, whatever direction the trustees go, it would be wise, I think, to, you know, think about some guiding principles in terms of what would be an appropriate use of that property, and under what scenarios could you improve it and keep it a golf course? Whether you turn it into a nine-hole course with some other developments around, I don't know if that's a viable option or not. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Bob to talk.
My name's Bob McCurdy, and wanted to take you guys through some course of actions that the committee has kind of come up with. As has been stated multiple times, subsidization is, it's a given if we continue as a golf course operation. The modest improvement in the operating model, I think the operating model itself is challenged. So there could be some modest improvement, but it's not going to be near enough to cover the level of subsidization. Enhancements in food and beverage may be available, but the facility is truly limiting. This doesn't have a, you know, there's a place in Livonia, One Under, that has a leased-out restaurant facility attached to one of their golf courses. That's just not an option with the current facility that's there. That would require some investment to get to some level of that nature. If the, if the operation is going to continue as a golf course, you know, we would recommend an RFP proposal go out. And in that RFP, I would think they would need to make their business case to improve the current operation. A revenue-only-based contract, as is currently, really doesn't, doesn't allow a lot of skin in the game for the contracting company. It pretty much just, it puts the burden on us if there's issues. I mean, yes, you reap the rewards, but I don't see you reaping rewards anytime in the future. So there needs to be some performance objectives in a new RFP. And, you know, we continue to remain critical that even if, even if a new management company, for which there are dozens, if a new management company is brought in, we're not sure that will ultimately fix the situation at this point. The alternative uses, as was mentioned, we did have an architect come in and speak to us, and even with my 20 years in the golf industry as a golf course superintendent, I'm not qualified to lead a master plan process. I mean, there are true, there are professionals and architects out there who do this. So we would be recommending that a master plan be undertaken. Our committee thought it would be best to look at the entire park, not just the golf course, and incorporate, you know, the baseball fields, the splash pads, all of that, so that if there's any efficiencies with roadways or, you know, parking lots or any of that type of stuff, it could all be looked at at one time. The master plan, in our mind, would need to quantify estimates for the investment in the property itself and any ongoing operating costs. So we would, we would want a master plan to tell us, hey, we have to spend XYZ on the property itself, but then are we actually going to get any better than the, you know, 235 to 320 that is currently projected? And I think that could easily be done. The factors to, you know, what is going to be that all-in cost of developing a sustainable golf course? If it remains a golf course, would be studied as well. I know the irrigation system there is dated. You know, we saw the list of capital expenses. That doesn't even include an updated irrigation system, which could be, you know, upwards of $1 million alone. That's nowhere in the current projections. So it needs a, it needs a soup-to-nuts study by a professional to determine what the real numbers are. And on top of that, the master plan, the list that was in the presentation earlier, the cart paths, carts, some of the other work that's been tees and drainage and things, all of that would get studied and flushed out by a golf course architect or a land development architect. You know, we'd want to look at the investment and incremental cost of the, you know, if it becomes a green space. Can we actually maintain that piece of property for less than the 230 to 320? I, with my experience in the green industry, I have my doubts about that. It's a big piece of land that has to be maintained. And then, you know, the qualitative factors from the community. What does the community really want it to become? I think we heard a lot of public, you know, public comment that they definitely don't want to see housing there. They'd like it to remain green space, at least the people that were at our meetings.
Bob, if I could just ask you to perhaps bore in a little bit more on the enhancements to food and beverage operations. My recollection is you thought that could be improved based on the fact that it's only $4 or something per golfer. Is that something that you would foresee in the RFP process that could be somehow improved?
Potentially. The facility itself is very limiting, you know? I mean, if you looked at the breakdown, there's $100,000 in F and B business. There's 60,000 of that is alcohol sales. So we're really just putting cans of, you know, beer into a bag of ice. So there really isn't a lot of food sale. It's only food and beverage, or it's only really beverage sale that's driving that. And I think that speaks to the lack of an adequate kitchen or, you know, sit-down facility where somebody would have a burger or a hot dog after a round of golf. I'm going to turn this over to Chris here to talk about the timeline and next steps.
Right, so I get to be the closer?
You're supposed to drop the mic, not break.
I definitely dropped the mic. So the short version on the timeline for the board, the biggest timeline you have to deal with is going to be a notification to Billy Casper Golf. By our calculations, that has to be done by November 30th. The true calculating date is actually in December, but it lands on a weekend. So just to be safe, we went on an earlier date. That's how we came up with November 30th. Really, what we think has to happen from now until November 30th is we'd like to have somebody on board who can really look at these alternatives for the land, be it golf courts, be it parks, be it...
Use one of our board microphones.
I'm okay. As long as everyone can hear me from here, it doesn't bother me. It will stop me from pacing, so. The one thing that we, we are focusing on primarily for the board, we want you to look at the date, November 30th, and we suggest there are some things to accomplish within that time period. So we talked about referring to capital expenditures. I'm not going to read down the list, because they're in front of you and you can see it. The core of, the core of our group at the end of the day is, we think the master plan is really the best idea. We are not limiting ourselves to a golf course, per se, but we are looking, as Bob said, that entire piece of property. And even from the public comments, that was the biggest consideration, is we have so many alternatives available to us that we really need somebody who is specialized in that area to help us out. So that's where we're heading. By the fall, if you, next one.
Next slide.
So by fall, we think, at that point, the board should have a pretty good grip on where Billy Casper currently stands in the projections. You can compare them to what our group has come up. That should give you a very good guideline of where we stand and whether our projections are correct or Billy Casper's are more accurate. Maybe Billy Casper really rocks it out this year, and they're ahead of the game, and by the fall, you say, everything cured itself, their plan came through as anticipated, and you don't need to provide that notice. However, we think you should be prepared by the fall to get out there and say, we're going to give Billy Casper notice. This will give you essentially until May of 2019 to have considerations done and make determinations on the park and the golf course. Is it going to be another facility that comes in and runs it in 2019? Do you change the agreement with Billy Casper Golf, so it's a more mutual agreement as opposed to our current cash system like Jason was talking about? And then by, that takes us to November 30th of that.
That was us.
The phantom microphone, I love it. So that really takes us to the end of our presentation, which is, you know, the guidance for the board is the golf architect. We had a very astute gentleman come into our meeting, provide us with nearly an hour and a half, two hours of time, opened himself to public comments as well. And although he is a golf architect, he is also a land use planner as well. And I think that's the overriding, I know I'm repeating myself, but hopefully, third time, it's going to sink in. All the public comments were directed to having a good use of this entire piece of property. And we don't have to limit ourselves to golf, although the community wants to preserve a golf course, just not the one we currently have, because it's not, you know, we don't think it's fiscally viable at this point. We think Billy Casper's done an excellent job with what they have. We think they were very open in providing us with all the documentation, and we think that our projections, in combination with theirs, are pretty accurate. So that's where, that's where we came down at the end. So at this point, unless there are questions, hopefully, I did everything.
Well, don't sit down.
Yeah, don't sit down yet.
Actually, I'm going to bring everyone up with me.
Let, yeah, let's open it up to the board for questions and comments. And remember, obviously, we're not deciding anything here tonight, but, you know, I'm sure we have questions for the committee.
Well, let me, if I may, make a few comments. First is, you know, thank you very much to the committee, including the interested bystanders, not innocent bystanders. not innocent bystanders. So the fundamental question comes down to, is it possible to make that golf course financially viable to the extent that it could at least break even? If the answer, our analysis under the current situation is that that's probably unlikely. If it continued in its current form, what is the appetite for the board to provide subsidization, knowing that even if it closed today, there would still be expense to maintaining the property? I don't know, everybody might have a different opinion. So, so the question comes down to whether it could be transformed in some way to make it viable. I really think that having at least a portion of it that is revenue generating provides an offset to what it would cost to maintain it, because as I think several people indicated, if it, if it just turned entirely into parkland, you know, that, I don't know what that would cost, but it would cost probably more than we're currently subsidizing it. So we really like the idea of bringing in an expert. The cost was not going to be overwhelming. What did, what did they estimate?
The estimate we were given was somewhere between 17 and 20.
Yeah, 20,000, and that expert then might come up with some ideas. For example, maybe it could be reconfigured and you use two-thirds of the property, for example, and make it nine-hole and use the rest of it as parkland. I mean, there's a number of different options, but I think it's really, you know, it really comes down to that fundamental question as to whether it could be, you know, viable. And again, I mean, to underscore what has been said, I don't think there's any appetite in the community for using it for anything other than green space.
Want to just go around the horn?
Yeah, I think, you guys did an outstanding job. Thank you very much. One of the things I do like about having somebody come in and do a different look, professional, is where are we at on St. John's? Right? And as that development comes back up, what does that do to our golf course? Does it change the number of rounds at all? Does it, you know, obviously you're talking two tremendously different courses, but if you're going to golf in the area, you know, it's going to make a difference. So that's really all I've got. You know, that, that hybrid solution, I think, looking at the triangle, looking at a different restaurant, you know, is somebody want to put a restaurant in there? Great. You know, $4 spent on food and drink, just, that number blows me away. It's just, it's, it's an awful number. And based on the total number of rounds and the people playing, I'm expecting them to spend a little bit more money than that, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I, again, want to thank the, the committee. It's wonderful that we had all these talented people that came forward, spent their time, was very open, very transparent. The board was open and transparent about our purpose for doing this, and I think you did an outstanding job, and I want to thank everybody for their participation. And, and talking about bringing in a professional management team, I think, I think that's, that's the kind of the first step I think we need to do in order to get to the next decision spot or, or basis for making a decision. Of course, if you were to change it into park, doesn't mean that you mow all of it like you do now. You may have some areas that would go wild, so possibly your cost would not match the amount of money that you're spending now. But I think if there, you need to have that analysis done by a professional architect of some sort. And so I think that's probably, if I were thinking about how to go, would be, that would probably be like our first step. So thank you again very much.
What do you think the market is like out there for these professional consultants that know about golf courses? What, what's the market out there? Is it two guys, five guys?
Oh, there's, there's probably 30 guys out there. Some wouldn't touch this project, it's, it's too small. But I think what's unique that we didn't mention in the presentation, the gentleman that stepped forward is a, he happens to be a City of Plymouth resident, is very well-known, Cornell-educated, Harvard-educated. That individual would like to do, and I think it's reflected in the pricing, I can speak from my experience, when I renovated Country Club of Detroit, we paid $75,000 in master plan fees. This gentleman is willing to do this for somewhere between 17 and 20, provided it's not onerous and a ton of extra meetings. I mean, he does have a little qualifier in there that if it becomes more than, I think it's five or six meetings, he'll, he'll do one or two extra, he's not going to do, you know, 15. But for him to be willing to do this for 17 to 20 is truly a community give back. He wants to be involved in that project.
So just walk me through that process, because I'm up against the timeline. I mean, we all are. November 30th is going to be here fast. This, this year is almost, you know, half over, as is. And we've got to be able to, we have to work on several different tracks here right now. I mean, one is, if, if we do a study, and I'm okay with that, I, but let me get to that in a minute. If we do, we have to do the study. We have to look at what kind of contract we may want in the future. What's that going to look like? What's that RFP going to look like? And if, if we go a different route to a passive park environment, what's that going to look like? Many different tracks all moving at once, and the time, the time is going to be very compressed for us to make critical decisions. I know Billy Casper has already come to us and said, you know, we can, we can do this for another year, just extend our contract. I don't like kicking the can down the road, and so I'd like to make some decisions this year if, if possible. Our procurement policy does allow for professional services that can be recommended by me to the board for approval with a very streamlined procurement process for professional services. So that's, that's good news. If he does a study like this, are we talking, is this going to be some type of mandated procedure or process that has to happen, like we just had with the joint recreation master plan? I mean, you talked about meetings, I, I, you know, are we going to go through another twice-a-month format with-
No. So, so we're going to tag team you on this one, if that's okay?
Okay, go for it.
The short version is, when it was presented to us, if the board feels that you have to do an RFP to select somebody who's going to do a master plan, that's going to extend your process. If you actually select the gentleman that we have been speaking of, who, who is willing to become part of this because he's part of the community, he was talking like four to six weeks to have something roughed out and ready. I mean, so we're talking about a person who has the skill and the time and the education to do that, pretty much on his own with, with very little input. Once he has the, kind of the roughed-out master plan, that's when the community and board input comes in and any delays or extensions you would want to make. So, kind of like Bob was saying, you can get as crazy as you want. If, if you want to have that level of involvement, the price of the master plan is going to go up because the professional services being used are going to go up. If you're looking for somebody who wants to give you a rough plan and then hand it over to you to make decisions, and when the decisions are made, hand it back, I think your, your process is streamlined. So in, in our minds, meeting, meeting a November deadline would not be an issue. We think you could have a master plan roughed out, geez, probably by July, August.
But, but, but his objective would be, what, what would be his key objectives? I think, I think a key objective would be to determine whether the, the course could be transformed in a way that could make it financially viable, right?
I, I think the, the best step would be for this committee to develop a list of deliverables that are in agreement with the, the architect in question, so that you, before approving, would know exactly what would be delivered. We just haven't gone that far as a committee yet. And I, I believe if, if you said go today, if you had everything in front of you, you said go today, I think you're looking, 90 days out, you're going to have some concepts to start looking at and really start adding that to the dual-track equation of RFP moving in a different direction. I think you'd have that, you know, 90 days, 120 max. It just, when we get into the public comment component, that's where it could get, you know, extended.
Does there have to be a public comment component, or can we effectively borrow the information? I, I don't want to have to reinvent the wheel and go through all this for another four months.
Totally with you.
I mean, I think we need to, I, I think you guys have done a lot of that legwork already.
So depending on the, on the charter township, I don't know that this is a public, public input, public comment type of decision. I think once you have the master plan in place and you allow for comments maybe one or two times, I think you're good to go. Now, I mean, that's not my area of expertise, that, that would-
Yeah, and that can be done, that can be done at a board meeting too, or a study session.
Right. And the one thing I wanted to let you know, in terms of Billy Casper Golf and moving forward or working with them, within the contract, Billy Casper Golf has the same opportunity to say no to this board and no to the, no to the township by November 30th as well. And maybe they have no desire to continue on. So this, this is a mutual thing. The other part of it is, even if you give notice on November 30th, that doesn't mean you stop working with Billy Casper Golf at that point. It, it just, under the contract, the only thing it does is you've given them notice that you, you have an intent, you may or may not go another way. So frankly, there's some, there's some openness in that contract, and the only firm deadline is that November 30th notice. What happens after that point is kind of vague in the contract, so I don't think you're closing any doors.
So the contract has some extension clause if we say yes?
No, it does not, Chuck.
It does not.
No.
But, but we could, if, if I could paraphrase what you said, Chris, we could give them notice today, if we're going to do an RFP and we're going to have this, you know, this master plan done, we could give them notice today, and we could, we could always enter into negotiations with Billy Casper Golf. We could always-
Correct.
I mean, we have other options.
The, the notice provision in the contract, and Bob reminded me appropriately, the, the notice provision says if you don't give notice, it's an automatic renewal.
If they want it.
So, so you get, you know-
If, if Billy Casper accepts the automatic renewal.
No, no, and, and that's the weird part about-
So you're saying we could force them into a renewal?
If, if this board does nothing, and Billy Casper does nothing, as of November 30th, you have an automatic renewal.
For how long?
Yeah.
It was, it was.
We need to check that. That sounds like a, they, they signed a pretty bad contract. We could box Billy Casper Golf in.
I voted no on it.
Pardon?
I voted no on it.
So how much money does Billy Casper make a year off of this?
It was, it was not a good contract, and no offense to our-
What, 11% of the gross revenues, is that what they make?
Yeah, that's right.
Plus incentives of a certain amount.
Okay, one, one question at a time here.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't have that number committed to memory. My, my personal feeling is Billy Casper Golf is not making a huge amount of money on this deal. As I said before, they have every incentive in the world to try to raise revenue because if they had a million dollars of revenue and a million and a half of expenses, we would be worse off, but they'd be much better off, they'd double their revenue. So they have dedicated people there. As I looked at the numbers there, it's, it's not a windfall for them.
I, I think the overriding concern is that this site is going to lose money, whether it's a golf course or a passive park. It's going to lose more money as a golf course, not just in the operations, but also in the requested investments that Billy Casper has legitimately asked for. They say we can do a better job if you guys, the township, spend more money and make it a better course. We know we have to buy new golf carts in the next couple of years, but the paths are not great. I know trees need to be trimmed and removed. The clubhouse is not what the customer expects nowadays. So there's a lot of money that we would have to put into this golf course to make it hopefully better. We don't have the money. So we have to make very difficult decisions on either finding more revenue or cutting our expenses or going into a different business with that site. And that's why we're here, so, and we're not going to make those decisions tonight. Like I said, it's a broad perspective. Okay, Mark?
I just wanted to echo and thank everyone for their, for their time and expertise and in participating in this committee. Not just from the work product that you developed, but the decision was made early on to conduct these meetings in an open meetings environment. And they conducted themselves with, in front of some pretty emotionally charged participants, groups much larger than this, and I think they did a great job of managing that process. And, and eventually, I sat in pretty much every meeting and they were able, pretty much to turn the people's opinions around in what the charter of this team was and what we were trying to accomplish. I, I think, Bob, you, you hit it spot-on. This is never going to be a break-even or a moneymaker. We're going to have to come up with that threshold of what we are going to be willing to subsidize this operation at, whether it's 100, 150, 200, I don't know what that answer is. I am a big believer and I, I fully support what your recommendation is, because I'm a big believer that this course was built in 1927. It lacks certain things to make it a successful operation. The food and beverage, there's no driving range, there's no practice facility, those things bring in money. If we re-architected and repurposed the land to maybe add those types of, of capabilities, it's not, no, it's not going to make a ton of money, but it's not going to lose as much money. That's, that's my opinion. So I, I think, I think we're going in the right direction with this approach.
I echo the comments about the quality and the participation of the committee members. It was really outstanding to be part of this group, because really great expertise and involvement at every meeting, and I also commend the community because, yes, there were a lot of people that came out for those meetings, and I think the input was terrific. I just want to highlight a couple of quick things. One is this issue about 23% of the rounds last year were played by folks from, I think it's actually ZIP code 48170. So that means 77% of the rounds are played by people not from the Plymouth community, and even 48170 does extend beyond the boundaries of the township and the city. So that's something we need to also keep in mind, is that this course is being played mostly by non-residents at a subsidized, in a subsidized situation. And in that light, there are other courses like St. John's and Fox Hill, so it's something that we need to factor in as we make these decisions. I guess I'll throw in the third thing, which is when you make investment decisions and you don't spend money on the clubhouse, I take it that would have been a very good thing to do in the past to enhance that. There was a missed opportunity there because money was spent on some other facilities, some very close by, that could have enhanced the clubhouse and made the course better. So really puts a premium on what we do here with this going forward so that we don't make financially imprudent decisions with our crystal ball gazing. So thanks very much for all of your help.
Most of you know that for over a decade, this course put 250 to 350,000 dollars in the township general fund. So it did make money at one time and contributed a lot. So was there any thought given to a community, making this a 501(c)(3) PARC-like, sell shares, make it a community course, downsize it, break, make it break even? Something, something creative that, you know, we would sell shares to the community for 500 bucks or whatever, people that wanted to participate? Has something like that ever been done? I, I know it's been done in, for other facilities, but I want somebody to think, comment on that. Yeah, the Green Bay Packers, yeah.
Let me comment on the, on the first part, because I'm going to try and take them in order, Mr. Kermy. So the first part, when you said the golf course was profitable, it was profitable at the expense ultimately of the township. So what we found out is what Billy Casper inherited was a golf course which was extracting large amounts of profit but not maintaining the golf course. So you had short-term gain, which was profitable for the company, which put some money in the coffers of the township, but then left us with a course that was in not great condition and put Billy Casper into position where they really were challenged- and put Billy Casper into position where they really were challenged taking over that golf course and attempting to make any money. So I don't think it's quite accurate to say it was a profitable and great golf course. I'm sure if we go back far enough in time, it was. Our point, going to your last point, which is, has anyone talked about, you know, the 401(c)(3) or community plans? That's why we're talking about a master plan. And I think that could be very easily incorporated as part of the master plan and the best uses for this property. And then kind of segueing that into Supervisor Heisey, we're not talking about a one-year fix or a two-year fix. What this committee is looking at is a long-term plan for this property. And when I say property, I mean the entire area, the golf courts, the park, the ball diamonds, everything, incorporating that into one space. So that in 15, 20 years, people are looking back and saying, "We had a great plan that was put into place. We followed that plan." And we, if we've done, if we've done this correctly and the projections are correct, we can have a, for lack of better words, acceptably profitable or acceptable tolerance subsidized, I can't say it, subsidized. Subsidized property. And when I say within tolerances, you know, we're paying for water on, you know, over in the park area. We have expenses which are part of the community expense. The acceptable tolerance level for a golf course fits into that whole master plan and that whole property. So what we're saying is, we don't want the board to say, "Hey, it's going to cost a lot of money to effectuate this master plan." It may or may not. But what we're saying is, we're looking five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road with this property because that hasn't happened and it really needs to happen. That's kind of our focus.
Let me add a couple of comments to that because we did talk about that. We said, you know, project ourselves 20 years out and then work backwards from there. But to Chris's point, unfortunately, we didn't have archives that really were maintained and were available to us. So a lot of this we had to do from collective memory. But we know that there were at least three different business models under which that golf course was operated at some time in the past. And the previous, previous to Billy Casper. Previous to Billy. Previous to Billy Casper, the model was such that the prior operator was not incentivized to maintain the property because they were paying, they were paying us, I think they were paying us a flat fee or something. So there was, Billy Casper indicated when they took over operation, there was really, there were really no tools or equipment left behind. I think somebody said one broom. And they had, and that was because the previous operator was not incentivized because of the business model. So there were at least three different models.
Well, the previous operators brought their own equipment and ran it as their own business.
And they paid.
And paid a lease fee to the township. So they owned everything and some of them did, beginning with J-War. And then there was a couple after that, one that was there for seven to 10 years. They invested their own money in the carts, was all their money. The only thing that the township had to maintain was the irrigation pump and the ponds. Everything else, we built a building. The building became condemned. It was a very old building. So we built a building and that's all.
So I'm not sure where you're.
Where I'm going is the township invested very little of their own money in exchange for the lease fee, which, Chris, I appreciate what you said, but it wasn't that the township was just using up the asset because the contractors used their money for the capital, for machinery and carts.
So what you're suggesting.
Until this last round where we, the township bought the carts. That was a first.
So what you're suggesting though is that if we, if we went out to RFP and we adopted a prior model?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just making factual statements of the past. I don't know what, no, I'm not making any judgment about an RFP. I'm just putting a perspective that it did make money at one time. The market has changed, but it, I know there's a $500,000 quote loan or something. My point is that in the past, that money was offset. If you made 10 years of $300,000 average, what is that? Is that 3 million bucks? So it wasn't the total dog that it's turned into for all of that period of time. So.
Well, as the golf course guy, I'll tell you that the switch from one operating model to another is what led you to this point because now you are on the hook for all the capital stuff. So had there been a previous agreement where all of that was being done, that should have never been changed. Because now, when Billy Casper's been here for six years and this stuff has not been invested in for six years, that's why you're staring this in the face right now.
Yeah, something changed. It may have been because there was no incentive for anyone to run it without township injecting capital, whereas in the past, there was an incentive because there was profit to be made in the 80s, 90s and early 2000s.
I think there's definitely a hybrid model that could be looked at, not a complete lease, but not a complete, the township pays for everything. I think that's clearly something to look at.
One other.
Just another, I'm sorry, but just another final thought that I had is, we, this is one of those decisions that we have to get right. And if we don't get it right, I'm, to be honest, I'm not opposed to kicking the can down the road for another year and extending this. Because if we make the decision to close the golf course and that, then that golf course remains dormant for a year, you'd never get it back. So if we make that decision, that golf course is gone forever, not for a year, but forever.
Agreed.
So we got to get this decision right. And if we can't get it right, well, let's kick the can down the road for another year to make sure we do get it right.
One other piece of information is, we'll have to investigate this. Some of the land there was purchased by funds that came from the state of Michigan. So when it comes to selling, we need to look and see what lands were purchased from, I think it was called the DNR. It was a DNR trust fund and the land was purchased somewhere between 1978 to probably 83. So we have to be careful of what we are allowed to sell. It may be that only the township park was purchased with some of those funds. In fact, the township park had a referendum. The voters said, "Don't buy it." The township bought it anyway with some of this subsidy from the state of Michigan, is what I recall. But I was away at college at the time, so I don't know exactly what happened.
There are, you know, DNR plaques and other memorabilia on some of the buildings and inside some of the buildings. I don't believe that what involved the purchase or sale of the land, it was the buildings. And again, I just want to make it clear again that with the exception of the triangle property, I don't think anybody is talking about selling the golf course. I mean, I have talked about selling the triangle property. I make no mistake, no bones about that. But as far as, you know, the rest of it, I think everybody wants to keep it as a public amenity of some sort.
Go ahead.
As a member of the committee, I think it was very clear by everybody, not only who came to the committee meetings, but also to my pinnacle group, to my book club, to every group that I went to, to every club that I belong to, to everybody I see in Plymouth, that this should be a green space. And the one major decision that I think is really important is if we make the decision to change it from a priceless green space to something else, I believe what Treasurer Clinton says, "We lose it forever." And that should not go away. And I think that was so clear by all the people that came. So I think if we look at a master plan, all these business models and so forth will get sorted out. And no matter what, if it's a green space, I don't see it as a liability. I think it's really a cost to us as citizens for what we want to maintain as recreational space in our community, which I think is very important. And I think most of the other people who came and who we talked to feel as important as well.
I agree and I, you know, I've said this before, if there's anyone in Plymouth Township that thinks that we ought to go to development on that property, I haven't met that person. But, you know, even to your second point, you know, there's a cost and somehow it would have to be paid for. And, you know, we have, we have lots of other, we got lots of other challenges, starting with our legacy costs are crushing because that was kicked down the road for so many years.
Well, the board has to come up with, you know, what costs can manage for, I mean, what's the cost we manage for the township park as it is now? I don't think we ever found that out exactly.
Well, that's all the parks. But, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, Township Park itself, it's going down every year. I mean, we budgeted about 70, I think my original estimate was 75,000 and now it's up to like 100.
Yeah, I mean, you could extrapolate to an extent.
All we can afford now at Township Park is just to mow the grass, keep the lights on and fix everything that breaks. And there's something that breaks there almost every day. Because all of the other money that was bonded for and all the other land that was sold, the old township hall and all of the other expenses that all went into the pavilion and the parking lot and the amphitheater that never was.
Don't mention anything.
Well, the, you know, the money was spent and when that money was borrowed, there was actually a line item in there to repair golf cart paths. And it was spent on something else. The money, I mean, the money's gone, it's gone, you can't get it back. But, you know, it, but it does, it is a cost and you can't, can you, you know, scale it literally and say, "Well, you know, it would add this." We don't know and the only reason we can't answer that question is it just never, it's not accounted for that way. It doesn't say it couldn't be in the future, it just hasn't been in the past.
Well, my neighbor wants to make the triangle actually a community garden so that people that live in condos could rent a piece of the community garden and keep their community garden. So there's people out there with great ideas for what to do.
You wouldn't have to mow the lawn then.
That's right, exactly.
Just get cows. Then you wouldn't have to mow the lawn.
Oh, boy.
So when there's a master plan, I hope the two of you all come and hear about it and make suggestions.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? I also want to take any questions from the public as well. Yep, in the back. You got to come up.
Just one last, Kurt. So moving forward, are we going to move forward with?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, what we'll do is we'll talk internally about, I want to find out who this consultant is.
Okay.
And I think that would probably be my first course of action. But I would suspect that we will see additional comments, study, time, et cetera, that we have to spend on this over the summer. Yep?
I just had a quick question. Walt Coleman, 9130 Woodbury. Is it even possible with something with this situation to come up with a true hybrid in that you're talking about food and everything like that at the golf course and all that? You also have a park over there with baseball diamonds. You have a golf course that I don't think is utilized in the winter. Is there any way that you could get like a restaurant or something there, small banquet facility, that you could have people with like baseball teams come in the summer, take advantage of the restaurant, generate money, in the wintertime, cross-country ski or something, use the restaurant? Is there any way that something like that could be worked out with the township that you could actually have a true business model that could make money?
Yeah, we've, since this whole discussion started back in really the fall of last year, I've been approached by probably four or five operators, some who can do both golf and restaurant, some who do restaurant only. I think the Billy Casper people will tell you that they're not in the restaurant business and that clubhouse is completely inadequate for their operations. It would be, it would be nice. You know, now we're thinking of maybe like two RFPs, but it would be nice if we could find somebody who could manage the clubhouse in a profitable, professional manner. Not that Billy Casper isn't, but they're stuck with it right now. And then Billy Casper could still run their ticketing operations and sales operations out of that same building. That would be a model worth looking at.
I'm not a golfer or anything like that, but I keep thinking back, over there on Hagerty Road between Five and Six Mile, there's a little golf course back there and there's a restaurant. Okay, it's a Coney Island, I'm not thinking Coney Island, but something, you know, whatever more appropriate.
Yeah.
But that restaurant's always busy in that, I know it's right off of the main drag there and that, but.
But it's really an apples and oranges comparison. If you look at, if you look at Senate Coney Island, which is what you're talking about, that is a much larger facility. They have, they have their own mini banquet room in there. They seat probably a couple, they can probably seat a couple hundred people. It's a real full-blown restaurant. Our little clubhouse is basically a stainless steel grill and a refrigerator and some folding tables.
But the township doesn't have enough land in there to develop that they could actually put something like that in? Smaller though, not.
Well, I mean, we don't have the money for anything like that.
Well, that's where the private investors would come in.
Well, yeah, and then it gets into, I don't know what the neighborhood reaction would be to that as well, so.
It's worth exploring.
It is.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Phil Carter again, 45969 Green Valley Road. I, as I listen to this and I keep, I sit there and I say to myself, "Why is the township in the golf business? Why is the municipality in the golf business when we have so many courses around here that compete with us? Good courses, I mean, really good courses. I have neighbors and friends that have used that course. I used it years ago once and I thought then it was an unsafe course. People tell me it's an unsafe course. It's a lost leader for this community. I look at you guys and I think that if you, if this was a business and this was a division within our business, it would be gone. As this kind of business, we would re-designate that property for something else that wasn't losing this kind of money every year and now we're looking at projecting, losing even more money possibly? I think we're wasting our time looking at this as a viable golf course option. We need to be spending our time looking at a better use of that space if it were me. If this were my business and I was running it, we would not have, it would not be a golf course. We would have something else in there that would be beneficial to the community and not costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars on an annual basis. It's only my opinion, but as I look at it as a next business guy, it would be gone. And, you know, I don't think we ought to kick any more cans down the road. This board has kicked, not this one, prior boards have kicked the cans down the road on too many things. And this is another one we should stop kicking down the road. My opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Dave Berger and I just want to totally disagree with what this gentleman just said. I happen to be a golfer who thinks that piece of property is amazing and a lot can be done with it and could be making money if changes were made that might be a little risky. I mean, you've been talking a lot about finances. Well, anybody entrepreneur-wise knows that you risk money, you put money into something. And I also think that probably the government isn't going to do a good job at that. And so whatever is done, such as taking Powell Road away and making that whole triangle part of the golf course or, and putting up a restaurant that's open all year, maybe even a golf dome, for sure, a practice. even a golf dome, for sure, a practice facility, do it right. Do something classic because that's the competition that's out there right now. There's ideas that are good ideas, but, you know, we need to make a change over there. I totally agree with that, you know, and don't worry about losing money. Just do the right thing with that land. That's a great, there was, if I can just say this little bit, a golf designer once said, pardon my voice, I'm not crying, I have a missing, one of my vocal cords is not working right now, but golf course designers don't build golf courses, they discover them. And so, yes, we're green people, aren't we? We love the outdoors. I think of that golf course really as a beautification site and the surrounding community as a golf course community. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, okay, I want to again thank this committee. You are all volunteers who have come forward with a very diverse set of talents and expertise and interest in this issue. And I know at times you were put into the political crucible, which you certainly did not deserve, but you got through it and you not only got through it, you've produced an outstanding product that I think will provide us with a great deal of information and input that we can use and use, I think use quickly, that we can implement into effective public policy that will preserve green space and hopefully provide value for our taxpayers. So, again, thank you very much and I certainly hope we can call on you individually in the future for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time I'd like to take a brief break and then we would reconvene at nine o'clock. Let's get started. Next up is the agenda item F5, Presentation by Corporate Benefit Solutions. Let me just reiterate really what's up there on the screen right now. We have many challenges and opportunities over the next several years in how we provide employee benefits, manage OPEB compliance, streamline human resource processes and reduce costs. By year's end, we will also need to reorganize our human resource department and prepare for upcoming collective bargaining agreement negotiations. Corporate Benefit Solutions is here, they have experience in private and public sectors, integrating HR, compliance, payroll and benefit management services in a way that should save taxpayer dollars, provide competitive benefits for our employees and provide tools for us to comply with the state OPEB mandates in the future. As you know, we've had people here in the past who have told us about our ongoing OPEB liabilities and the fact that we will have to be under state guidance with respect to our employee benefits and our pension plans. So, we've invited Corporate Benefit Solutions here tonight to share with us their ideas and vision for our ability to handle these challenges in the months and years ahead.
Great, thank you.
You have the floor.
My name is Steve Mattar and as Kurt said, we're with Corporate Benefit Solutions. My associate Fred Elias is here and I'll introduce some of our other team members in a moment. That was a very great introduction to kind of get us where we're going. So, I'll kind of skip through some of that. We have done an analysis of what is currently, currently are the processes of the township and we've come to the realization that there are things that can be improved upon and things that will help save the township money, but at the same time also maintain the level of benefits that are currently in place for the employees and we find that to be very, very important as well. There are a multiplicity of things that need to be done in conjunction with what's going on here, so our recommendation is that the township take a team approach to this because of all the different, all the different moving parts. And so, with me is John Wa from MERS, Lindsay Tittensor from Palocity and Colleen Burke from Ecto HR. I'll get better introductions of them in a little bit, but the team approach is going to be used to sort of help ease the, the sort of timeline, the rapid timeline of what's going on here. And the timeline consists of the fact that your open enrollment begins in August and you have a September first open enrollment deadline and at the same time, it's come to our attention that your HR department is retiring in October. So, congratulations to them, but the situation presents itself that something needs to be done to help ease that transition out of open enrollment and maintain services for the employees. So, those two factors contribute to sort of a push to move and do some of the things that we're talking about in order to be sure that everything transitions very, very smoothly into this year's open enrollment. If we flip over to slide three, we were given several township goals to accomplish. The first was increase the value of services provided to the township. This is things like open enrollment process, open enrollment materials, reporting, data and analytics. Number two, streamline and consolidate HR services for the township's employees and retirees. These are things like helping with day-to-day problems, billing issues, updating the township handbooks, et cetera, and of course, saving money for the township. This is really important, obviously, nobody wants to overspend and finding ways to consolidate services, consolidate costs, fees, not only to the township but also to the employees is very important. But interestingly, these things fit together very tightly, they're very intertwined. And so, if we flip over to page four, we'll kind of go through how these things kind of are intertwined and how we can find what we believe to be some estimated cost savings, not only for the township but also for the employees. The first thing on the line here under benefits is health insurance and it's, you'll see a super script on that which, one, it says medical rate reductions on these are based on group census, more accurate rates will be available once your renewal is released. What that means is that Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Blue Care Network have not yet released the renewal, the upcoming renewal for the township. And because of that, we are, we are sort of hamstrung with going to market to get alternate quotes on the medical side. However, having said that, we have looked at the opportunities that exist with your current plan structure and we believe that with some very minor tweaking, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Blue Care Network programs could be repositioned. Again, the employees would have fairly much the same program, no deductible, no co-insurance, those types of plans and there's a potential savings there of about sixty-three thousand dollars. Again, we cannot, we cannot verify that yet until we get your renewal, that is not in stone, but we feel fairly confident that we can look at that and that does not yet take into account any of the retiree medical programs that could come along for additional savings. Again, not reducing benefits per se, but just simply changing the way these things are structured with the insurance carriers. So, a very nice potential there. Also, because the township has opted for Public Act 152 on an eighty-twenty cost sharing split, that savings, twenty percent of that savings would be going to the employees as well, so that's a very nice benefit to them. In the dental insurance world, you currently have Delta Dental as a carrier. Your provisions call for a hundred seventy-five, fifty plans, a hundred percent preventive, seventy-five for basic services, fifty percent for major services with orthodontia. We can build an identical plan to your plan with a larger network and with extras built into it. Some of those extras I could get into in detail perhaps at another meeting, it gets a little weedy to get into the benefit descriptions, but suffice to say, this plan is equal to or better than your current dental plan at an incredibly reduced price through Ameritas. Ameritas is the oldest commercial dental carrier in the United States, they are outrageously good and most other carriers outside of carriers like Delta actually use Ameritas as their back office. So, they are extremely well-versed and well-known in the dental world. Savings there, over twenty-nine thousand dollars to the township. That's pretty significant. In the vision scenario, we have your current benefits with NVA. NVA is the name of the vision provider to the township. NVA is a fine provider, but there are limitations to what they offer. Our analysis actually recommends that the township consider spending more. This is a kind of a outside-of-the-box approach, but IMED in this example has much stronger benefits than the current NVA program for very little extra cost, twenty-six hundred dollars of extra cost, but the benefits to the employees would be tremendously better and we think that would be a really good thing to consider in light of some of the other savings that are on board. Certainly, you can stay with NVA at the current price tag, that's not a, that's not a problem at all, we just think that it may be a good opportunity to upgrade. Basic life insurance and long-term disability insurance are currently covered through the Hartford and the Hartford again, an excellent carrier. However, going to market, we're able to find an alternate carrier, which is Reliant Standard. Reliant Standard would offer the township new two-year rate guarantees, which is great because it's going to lock in your rates and also with the long-term disability, we're looking at a reduction in cost of over twenty-two thousand dollars for the same benefit across the board. So, adding up all of those things, we're plus or minus fifty thousand dollars for pretty much the same or better benefits on the ancillary benefit world. That's the dental, the vision, the life and the long-term disability. So, we think those are great considerations as you come into your renewal, things that you consider doing that will not only improve the lives of the employees but also reduce costs. Again, the further integration of all these things that we're doing involves the HR administration. Currently, that's being administered internally, but the, again, the issue has come up that the HR person here is retiring, so what to do about that is the question. And our solution is to outsource that. We can outsource that at a lower price point than where you are currently with the internal staffing and improve your services all in, especially because we don't have benefit considerations for an external HR component. We think that will reduce costs by about thirty-five thousand dollars to the township. So, we'll get into the details of that in a moment. The enrollment process currently is on paper and pencil, which is a little archaic. It's hand keyed in, so once someone enrolls, that information has to be either keyed in or faxed or scanned and it is prone to error. So, we think the better solution there is to go to an automated paperless process. An automated paperless process does have an expense to it, fifty-seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That is a pass-through expense to our vendor for the online enrollment process, but that includes your ACA reporting. ACA is the Affordable Care Act, so that includes your ten ninety-five and ten ninety-four recordings. So, you're probably, I don't know exactly how the township is doing that currently, my guesstimation is that's being done through ADP at a fee that's probably close to or maybe slightly less than what you'd be paying for a fully automated integrated enrollment system. So, that would upgrade you tremendously. Payroll, payroll is the next item. Payroll is currently through ADP. ADP is a fine payroll provider, but we believe that moving forward with the company, specifically Palocity that we have here today, would be a tremendous upgrade. We'll talk about the nuances of that, but the nuts and bolts of that is simply that Palocity is going to be able to integrate fully with your online enrollment system. We call a three-sixty integration, meaning they will talk to each other so we can stay completely paperless and keep everything out of the hands of someone having keystroke in information.
Are you aware that we are using a timekeeping system from ADP?
Yes, and we would be able to accommodate every aspect of what you have with ADP and be able to do it roughly at the same cost, a cost-neutral prospect there. But yes, and when we get, if I may, we are aware of that, if I may, I'll defer that question slightly to when I bring Lindsay up to address that specifically of how time and management can be handled.
Also, would they be able to address whether Palocity does a lot of governmental type payroll? I mean, we have situations with like police and fire that are very unusual and sometimes difficult to calculate because you have bump-ups in pays and overtime and, you know, call-in times and have they done a lot of, and maybe they'll address that when they, when they get to that, do they do a lot of government?
If we may, I will have Lindsay address that specifically, but yes, they have done those things and I think what you'll find is that Palocity has integration capabilities and time management capabilities that far exceed what you currently have through ADP. So, I think you'll be very pleased with that. The next thing on the agenda is the Health Savings Care Program. That's the program where the township is giving money to the employees on a per-pay basis to help fund their retirement healthcare costs and this is very important. As that pile of money grows, it's being administered by ICMA, which is the International City/Council Management Association. They again are a fine organization. Our recommendation here is to consider the current vendor you use for your pension plan, which is MERS. And the reason we say that is because MERS has the ability to do this at a much lower price point. And when I say much lower, at a minimum, we're talking about fifty basis points or one-half of one percent lower expense charges to the plan. That's where you see the nine hundred and fifteen dollar savings. The reason that number is so small is because the total dollars that are currently in the Health Savings Care Program only amount to a hundred and eighty-three thousand. I say only amount to, it's a lot of money, but fifty basis points on a hundred and eighty-three thousand is nine hundred and fifteen dollars. As that grows into hundreds of thousands of dollars, fifty basis points becomes a lot of money and that is participant money and that's real dollars in their pocket. So, again, very conservative figure to savings there is fifty basis points, plus there are additional benefits such as beneficiary continuation items, which I think John Wa will be able to address when he steps up here, but very significant potential savings there, which ties right into the retirement plans. Currently on the four oh one A through John Hancock and the four fifty-seven plan through Nationwide, again, you are paying broker fees, you are paying excess charges in the plan. At a very minimum, those fees account for about fifty basis points, again, one-half of one percent. We think very realistically that it's closer to seventy-five basis points, as much as a hundred basis points, which is one percent. At fifty basis points, the savings to the participants is currently just under eighty thousand dollars a year. That's eighty thousand dollars a year of their money, your money, which could be reinvested. So, we think that would be a great solution. Again, when I bring John up, we'll be tackling some of that in a little bit greater detail. So, all in, total annual estimated savings, again, accounting for that health insurance, which we don't have a firm handle on yet, is two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Estimated employee savings is over ninety-three thousand dollars. Estimated annual township saving, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. This is for doing nothing drastic, this is for making very minor changes and for simply restructuring what you have to different vendors and/or, you know, some massaging to the plan. So, a very, very interesting for us, eye-opening experience to go through this and say, hey, this could be a really good program for you guys. And keep in mind, you do not have to make any changes at all to any of your benefits if you don't want to and still enjoy some of these savings, right? If you don't want to do anything, we're still going to be able to do all the administration, tie everything together, go paperless, do all of that and still have roughly thirty-five to forty thousand dollars of savings to the township. That's a very, very easy scenario, so you can simply say, we're just going to keep what we have and move forward, but we think these other items make it intriguing. So, if you flip over to page five, please, I want to drill down just a little bit to illustrate the key components of what we just covered. The current new hire enrollment process is where the HR person goes in, puts an employee in payroll, hands them a benefit package, the employee takes that benefit package home, they fill out the paper by hand, the employee turns the paper to HR, HR then handles that paper, double checks the forms, processes it, and I'm not sure how that's currently being processed, but either scanning or submitting to Blue Cross and Delta and NVA and Hartford individually, or perhaps that's going to your current broker who is keystroking that in and/or scanning that to the carriers who are keystroking that in. Again, ripe for error, ripe for things to go wrong and at a very conservative estimate, that's about one to two hours of HR time per person. And open enrollment makes that excruciatingly difficult, especially if things are missing or incomplete in the paperwork. There's a lot of running around grabbing people, getting them to do what they need to do. So, we don't think that is a very efficient use of time. Rather, on slide six, we have the proposed new hire process where HR would input, the new HR department as it were, would input the employee data into payroll and hand a benefit booklet with instructions how to go online. And for those people who are challenged by going online, we have technical support, we have Paul and they can do it over the phone, we can help them over the phone, we can do it in person. So, there's a variety of ways for people who may have issues enrolling online, but they would enroll online, payroll then automatically feeds, the enrollment system automatically feeds that payroll, which then, again, talks back and forth in a three-sixty direction to the integrated enrollment system. So, there is no paper, there is no keystroking, it's ninety-nine point nine percent accurate. The only errors we would have potentially would be the input by the employee. So, very, very user-friendly, kind of takes you from the twentieth century into the twenty-first century in terms of ease of use and the ability to be very, very efficient. Estimated time by HR, roughly fifteen minutes from. Estimated time by HR, roughly 15 minutes per employee, and that's for a new hire. An open enrollment is probably closer to $100. So items to address that we were asked to address. Number one, this is slide seven in your presentation, the OPEB compliance, Public Act 202. That's a very important topic of discussion, we'll jump into that. HR, department restructuring, the thoughtful and respectful preparation for future labor agreements, that's very, very important as well. Retirement and health savings programs and restructuring. So I'm going to grab the first item here, which is the OPEB compliance, and we'll talk a little bit about this. I'd like to bring up John Waugh from MERS. Again, some of you may know him because of the defined benefit program here, but I'm going to have him talk briefly about turnkey solution that exists for the township at no cost.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, just wanted to share some information with Kirk previously. I know that Sue Feinberg has probably been out before and talked a little bit about OPEB solutions as well as other pension-related items. But as I'm sure you probably are aware with regard to Public Act 202, you know, the Department of Treasury is kind of coming down with some requirements stating that if municipality isn't funded at a certain level with regard to pension and/or its OPEB or retiree healthcare obligations, that they're going to require that certain things be done. One of the things that MERS has available is an integral part trust, or what's called a retiree health funding vehicle, which is basically just a trust that can be set up to be able to fund these sorts of liabilities where the township can put money in. One of the requirements that the Treasury is putting forth right now is basically saying that you need to start funding effective July 1 of 2018, the normal cost of the retiree healthcare for any new hires. So that's just for new hires effective July 1, as well as funding or paying for that pay-as-you-go or your ongoing premium. So those are kind of the critical items would be relative to that, but the trust can also be set up to offset your OPEB liability, which you can use a higher discount rate if you're funding it within a trust to be able to calculate your actuarial evaluation for your retiree healthcare liability. So I realize that the township is not in a, you know, position where they're ready to quite funding that, but the trust can be set up at no cost. The only fees would be investment management fees based on how much money you have in the plan and the investments that you choose to invest your money in. But you can set it up and fund that normal cost, and then you can fund it at any time thereafter. So your auditor mate or your actuary are going to make some recommendations as to what you should be paying. At the end of the day, MERS is not going to dictate whether you do that, but the trust is there for you to be able to do. So there's basically a simple resolution, which I've already provided a copy to Kirk, so that's available. Make a couple of quick decisions, which I'm happy to assist with, and then the trust can be put in place and it can kind of check one of those boxes toward getting your waiver. Now, I realize the township has also made some changes. Retiree healthcare is not available for new hires, they're getting funds put into the healthcare savings program, so those are other things that can go toward getting your waiver as well. So it's a turnkey solution. It's easy, very low cost, very fast. Doing this on your own would require, you know, setting up a board, setting up a plan document, finding an investment manager to do the investments, somebody who's willing to, you know, take on money that's not necessarily going to be funded right away, so that's going to be difficult. So this is a really good solution for you guys that would be quick and easy to set up. So that's pretty much all I have with regard to, you know, Public Act 202. Are there any questions that I can answer for you with regard to that?
Yes. Tell me more about July 1. You said new employees versus carryover unfunded.
I'm sorry, where were you at?
July 1.
Oh, July 1. I'm sorry, I thought you said July 1. So on July 1, basically they're saying if you hire someone new, so if there are employees at the township who are still eligible for retiree healthcare, if they are hired beginning July 1 of this year, that the township would be required to start funding the normal cost of that person's retiree healthcare obligation. So your actuarial valuation would be able to calculate what that amount is, and then you would be required, so it may be a dollar amount, or if the plan is still open, it might be a percentage of payroll for that person that you would be required to put in. So that money could get put into the trusts basically at any time and satisfy that requirement.
That applies to new employees only.
That's correct. The legislation does not apply to past employees who are already employed or retirees. The requirement is that you fund the normal cost of new hires and that you pay the pay-as-you-go portion, which is the premiums. That being said, if there are municipalities who are funded less than 40%, there are going to be some things that are, you know, may be required in order to get your waiver, which would prevent having a kind of an oversight board put in place, some of which you've already completed. You know, maybe you're not offering that for, you're not offering retiree healthcare for new hires, for example, in certain areas. You're doing some cost sharing of premiums for retirees if they're paying for a portion of premiums. Maybe you've changed co-pays or deductibles with regard to the health plan. So there are things that the township has already done, that when you submit your report to Treasury that you should, I would think, most likely be able to get your waiver based on the things that have been done thus far, but that does not necessarily make that OPEB liability go away. So at some point, there's going to be, come a time where you either have to start funding or make additional changes.
As far as setting up the fund, we tentatively have that on our agenda for June 12.
Okay.
As far as establishing the trust and registering it and getting it all approved, is that too tight a timeline to achieve the July 1 requirement?
No, not at all. No, we should be able to accommodate that. You know, once it's been approved, we just need a copy of the signed resolution submitted to us. We can get the plan set up on our side, and that's pretty much it as far as that goes, and then you can start funding it whenever you're ready.
I guess just a point of clarification, there's no requirement that we set up the trust fund by July 1, is there?
There's no requirement that you have a trust. The requirement is that you fund the normal cost. However, it's probably in your best interest to set the money aside in a trust that's dedicated for those retiree healthcare obligations as opposed to just in a, you know, side account that might be used for alternative things at some point down the road.
Well, you would draw, you would start drawing an investment return the earlier you put it into the trust.
That's correct. Yep, so the money would go into the market. You can, there's a number of different investment options in there, from asset allocation portfolios to individual funds that you can select. You can go from very aggressive to very conservative, wherever you feel is appropriate.
And the trust would certainly help our standing with the state in terms of achieving a compliance measurable that would, that would show that we're in compliance with, or attempting to achieve compliance with the state.
Correct. Yeah, the trust is fully compliant with the law, so that is one thing that if you set it up, and again, you're not required to fund it in large amounts, so the normal cost of a new hire is going to be a pretty small amount. Whether or not you choose to put in the pay-as-you-go amount, that's completely up to you, but you can at least start funding the normal cost. And if there are opportunities to set additional dollars aside to fund that retiree healthcare liability, you can do it at any time. So again, MERS does not dictate your funding. Your actuarial valuation will dictate your funding requirement, whether you choose to, you know, put aside the full amount or a portion or...
So this question now affects Kevin Bennett's judgment and your judgment. We have an agreement with the city of Plymouth to pay a certain portion of the OPEB costs for a legacy. So how does this all tie in? I don't know, but we need to consider that. And these savings that were listed, some of those will have to be shared essentially with the city of Plymouth indirectly, because we do a pass-through on this contract. Is that right, Kevin? We pay first and then invoice the city of Plymouth for approximately $80,000 per year.
My understanding is if the settlement goes through, it will end basically the townships' and the city's relationship with respective pensions.
No, I'm not talking about pensions. I'm talking about the medical one.
About what?
Meta, OPEB. We have an $80,000 a year approximately agreement for the city of Plymouth to reimburse us for retiree healthcare costs, legacy remainder from the fire department. How does, we have to figure out how we tie that in. Maybe it's easy, but it's something to think about. It's an extra $80,000 a year that we've been passing through.
That's their portion of the pay-as-you-go, right? But they have very specifically said they would not be putting anything into a trust, that they will only...
We'll put the money in the trust, but we still invoice them for what we put into our trust.
That's, yeah, that's the pay-as-you-go. The pay-as-you-go is we're just paying expenses. We have to go above and beyond pay-as-you-go to start putting money away.
Right, but we have this factor, which is the city of Plymouth, which is involved, and it may be easy or it may create another nuance, so we have to think about it. You guys are all acting like you don't, you're not aware of this, so that's why I'm saying this. I see all these blank looks, like, what are you talking about? That's why we need to be sure we're talking about the right thing. Aren't we affected by this because of the city of Plymouth? We pay, it's almost like an expense account. We pay for the quarterly for the premium presently and then invoice the city of Plymouth. And it has the equivalent of about $78,000 a year last year or something like that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it offline with John. I think we're good, but I want to make sure we're good.
All right. I really don't see that there's going to be any legal issues with that. There may be logistical issues, but not legal issues.
That's what I'm raising, and just, we need to make sure everything is right.
Cindy, are you, do you want to say something?
Chuck is correct in the fact that we do incur a pay-as-you-go for the retirees, and we invoice quarterly, the city pays us, so that's a true fact. But as Mark or Kevin also commented, according to the agreement we signed, Plymouth Township wants no part of a trust, so it's not like...
Plymouth City.
No, or I mean, the city wants no part of a trust, so we can't, in effect, change the arrangement where we start putting money in a trust and then bill them for their portion. They want to continue on the pay-as-you-go, and I believe that's what the agreement states.
I realize what you're saying, but if we bill them for what we actually paid and then take that money that we get from the city of Plymouth and put it in the trust, there is nothing in that contract that precludes us from not, from doing that.
Correct, so...
So the city of Plymouth is divorced from a trust, but we can still take the reimbursement money...
Correct.
...and place it in the trust. That's the point. I don't know the details, that's why I just wanted to bring it up. It's an issue we have to be, it's a plus that we get this money from the city of Plymouth, because our OPEB liability is reduced by that pass-through reimbursement from the city of Plymouth.
Right.
But it's all on our balance sheet or books. The city of Plymouth, lucky for them, they have, don't have that liability in their audit documents. It's on our...
Right, they cannot control...
For them, it's an expense.
...what we do with the money when they pay us back. We could put it into the trust or we could do other things with it.
All right, good. We're just thinking about it.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just do it.
All right, so flipping over to page nine.
So that's not in the package.
Page nine.
Nine is not in the package.
It's in our package.
All right, it's just missing in that one document, one package.
Sorry about that. Fred, we missed the copy.
No, I have it, I just can't project it.
Okay. Oh, oh, you have it in the thing, oh, all right.
Yeah, it's not in, it's not in.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Do you have any other pages? Is that the end of your presentation there?
Yes.
Fred, you have your...
We have the ones that you gave.
Yeah, we have the hard copy. It's the...
We do have a, we do have a...
I just can't...
Thumb drive, we can import that, or Fred can just plug in if that works. While we're doing that, the next slide, which we're going to be getting to, is going to be addressing the HR restructuring. Again, a necessity in the sense that, you know, the person who runs your HR department is retiring, which is a concern. And so on an ongoing basis after October, how are things going to be massaged? How are things going to move forward? I do have Colleen Burke here to answer any questions you might have on this integration. Again, our analysis shows a reduction in total cost, which we think would be very, very good for the township, and a very detailed review of the current process. So I'll bring up Colleen just to address that briefly and to answer any questions you might have.
Hi, everybody. I'm Colleen Burke. I'm a partner and shareholder at Acto HR. We are a relatively small HR outsourcing and consulting company. We're located in Brighton, and we do, we have worked with some municipalities, quasi-governmental organizations in the past, and we do HR outsourcing. So we're, you know, a very flexible, customizable type company, and we've gotten a little bit of insight into kind of what the township's needs are. Our goal would be to work hand-in-hand with the HR person, you know, throughout the summer until October, October 1, when she retires, and then ultimately take over after that. And we would offer a combination of in-person office hours each week, remote support, anything and everything that's really needed. We have provided a scope of services, but that can obviously be kind of massaged and updated as needed. You know, we would do things, like it says up here, anything from a full updated handbook, policy review. We'd look through employee files, make sure we're up to date and on compliance, kind of just give a fresh set of eyes. I know that the HR person's been here for a really long time and has a lot of institutional knowledge, so our goal would be to work very closely with her to get a lot of that before she takes off on October 1. So does anyone have any general questions on kind of what our approach would be or any specific issues or items of concern that I can address?
Yes. I want to reinforce what Jerry Vorba said. Fire department timekeeping is probably the most complex timekeeping in the world.
Right, yep.
And presently, Joanne, are we using a spreadsheet right now?
Yeah.
All right. So what method would you consider using?
I know that, and Lindsay might be able to touch on this more, that Palocity should hopefully have a feature where we can set up a specific policy per se or rules within the timekeeping system.
There's a lot of rules.
Yeah, there's a lot of rules.
You can speak to that maybe a little bit. Hi, I'm Lindsay Tullisar with Palocity. So in regards to time and attendance, we have a full suite of time and attendance solutions, and we can customize each solution for every company. So in your case, we would customize this for you with a specific department for fire, and that would be based on your rules. So that's set up just for you.
What fire departments do you presently do?
Currently, we do city of saline.
Is that a full-time fire department?
That I do not know.
Is the time and attendance system yours or do you use somebody else?
It is ours. It's all our software.
We pay for the customization?
You don't pay for the customization. We do have implementation, and during implementation, that's when we gather the rules. Once everything's set up, you can change it as you need to, but we do provide you with the software then and now.
I actually worked for a company that made that software for a while.
Oh, great.
Where are you located?
We're located in Schaumburg, Illinois.
They're a publicly traded company.
So how do you come to Michigan?
Oh, we're a publicly traded company that, with our headquarters in Schaumburg, Illinois. I'm a local representative, so I am a virtual employee that I work from home in Michigan here.
You're virtually here.
Yes.
She looks real to me.
Cindy, I'm going to put you on the spot, but this goes back, I'm trying to recall an issue we had with ADP where it couldn't interface with our general ledger system. We were trying to, does this ring a bell? And then ADP said you have to get on the new version of our software. If you don't remember, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, there was a, there's kind of a newer updated version, I guess, of ADP and a not-so-updated version, and they've asked us to update, and every time they've asked us, we decline. So currently, it's more of a process to change an account distribution than it could otherwise be if we had the newer version. But other than that, we haven't had really any problems with ADP that we haven't been able to work around or whatever.
Okay, all right.
Can I maybe jump in on that? As I mentioned, ADP is a fine payroll company, but part of the solution that we're bringing to the table is this full integration of the team. One of the things you would find with ADP... One of the things you would find with ADP versus Paylocity is that they cannot, or will not, would be the better, a better answer, integrate with the online enrollment system. So the online enrollment system that we're bringing to bear here, which is second to none, will not integrate into ADP's system. They will not allow that. Paylocity will, they're sort of agnostic to any other types of programs. They'll be happy to bring on the, a cordware system that we have in our stable, and they've worked with them extensively. So there's a, there's a big thing. Plus, with regard to what was just mentioned here in terms of upgrades, the best analogy I've ever heard a Paylocity rep use for describing the differences between some of the larger payroll companies and some of the more nimble payroll companies is that Paylocity is a cloud-based system, all right? So there is no nuts and bolts that have to be unscrewed or screwed. Everything's available to you at all, all the time. It's sort of the difference between a, a flip phone and an iPhone X. You know, with a flip phone, if you want to get, make a phone call, you're good. And I can do the same thing on my iPhone. But if I want upgraded services, if I want to have things that I can do, I have to buy a new phone. I have to increase my cost. Whereas with my iPhone, the updates come along, and till I want a new phone, I get updates automatically from Apple, they come down to my phone. Same thing with Paylocity. When you need to upgrade, the upgrades come in automatically. You get the same process that a fifty-thousand-person company gets. There are no additional fees for the upgrades, everybody gets the same thing. So you're never going to be in a position where you are now to say, well, if you want that integration, it's going to cost more money. So that's what, a huge plus with a company like Paylocity.
Cindy?
I don't want to wreck the order in which you wanted to speak, but since you brought that up, my understanding was, I don't know if I should address the board or them. My understanding was, and I'm not a representative of ADP or whatever by any stretch of the imagination, but I was under the impression that ADP does have an onboarding system now.
Yeah, it did.
So that you could do open enrollment and stuff like that on it. And I, other finance directors in the area use it. So that's when you said you could, the reason we would need Paylocity is to do this onboarding, my understanding is ADP has that capability.
Yeah, ADP has a proprietary enrollment system, which is very limited in its scope. The enrollment system we use is, is unlimited in its scope and its logic, its systems logic. So to your point, yes, but one of the reasons we like sort of siloing this is that if you ever got sick of ADP and you were using their online enrollment system, everything goes out the window. If you in the future get sick of ADP, or the enrollment, or Paylocity, or the enrollment system, everything's interchangeable. These are interchangeable parts that fit together seamlessly. ADP's solution is proprietary. They will not work with outside genders. So to that extent, the ADP system is somewhat limited.
So how do you get paid for this?
Great question. So we all get paid sort of separately and differently. But with, we kind of run down the, down the parameters of this here. With regards to the way we all work, John, of course, does not have a hard-dollar fee, there are no bills, they are assets under management. So whether it's the, the OPEB trust, or the health savings account, or the 457 plan, those assets under management, they get a piece of that, roughly fifteen basis points, which is significantly less than you're currently paying. Lindsay gets paid the same way that ADP gets paid on a P E P M basis. So that will be approximately, give or take, a couple of bucks, cost neutral to ADP, depending on how many bells and whistles you want to have there, and any upgrades you want to have to the current system. Acto HR gets paid, generally speaking, on an hourly basis or a contract basis for ad hoc services. Corporate benefit solutions get paid the same way your current broker is getting paid, which is through the, the already-built-in commissions on the insurance products. We do not have a separate billing other than for the online enrollment system, which is a pass-through cost from us, so-
So your commission is paid for by the carriers?
That's correct.
And indirectly by us?
Correct.
In the premium?
Yeah, and that's, but that's exactly the way you're currently paying your current broker. Obviously, we need to get paid to work as well, but that's the way that works, yeah.
Kurt, does this require an RFP?
Well, this would be- Under our procurement policy, this would be considered, these would be considered professional services. And we have, we, meaning myself and Mark, to some extent Cindy, have talked with other current and other potential service providers. So this is not a sole-source type of thing, and we've, we've been doing our due diligence to look at other, other vendors as well.
Do we have, do we need to have some others come in here and talk to us? Or just this one?
I wouldn't recommend it, I mean, I'm not sure-
You would recommend others come in and talk to us?
No, no. I think time is, uh, time is closing in on us with respect to open enrollment, OPEB compliance, contract negotiations that are going to start for most of our bargaining units at the end of the year. We're going to be, have, we, we are going to be interviewing a new labor attorney within the next couple of weeks. So, you know, once again, we, and we've got changes happening in the HR department, so we've got to make some, some decisions in the months ahead.
I think it would be helpful if we had some forms of testimonials, in a way.
We could certainly provide that.
This is a, I mean, this is a very intriguing presentation, but-
Yeah.
I'm familiar with MERS, not really familiar with the other providers.
We can get that to you in short order.
And a second part of that would be testimonials about conversions. You know, like payroll. How, how has that worked? Are there public entities, corporations that can attest to the fact that, yeah, these transitions went seamlessly and-
That's the most-
Don't worry about it.
The cut-over is what worries me, just what he's saying.
Yeah, well, that was your point.
Yeah.
Just echoing it. But that would be helpful, because then we have more confidence that this has been done, you've done it.
We will get the, we will get this to you collectively and, and present them to you. Yeah, no problem. I'll give you, you know, for, just a quick example, we worked with the charter township of Orion, similar scenario to you. We came in with new, with new management, new board. We were able to save them three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on their plan. We've been there five years, they're thrilled. So those are the types of processes we've been able to do, and I'll be happy to share those with you in testimonies, supervisor, et cetera, and we'll get something from everybody here and get that to you. You are comfortable with MERS, or do you need someone for those?
Familiar with them.
I'm familiar with them. I remember they made a, a huge error when we converted to MERS in two thousand and five by a hundred percent in your calculation of our pension costs. It was massively wrong. We converted from a defined contribution to a defined benefit, and it was a disaster. MERS made a bad calculation. I don't know the whole story, but I know that part of it.
That's probably before John was there, so.
Are there going to be any cost, any time, one-time costs for moving any of this, like John Hancock or Nationwide? Is there going to be any kind of cost incurred to the employee?
With respect to retirement plans, I'll have John address that, if there are any termination fees that you know of that would exist. So typically, not. What we generally do in the event that there is a desire to change retirement plan providers is we would hold a conference call between our record keeper at Alaris Retirement Solutions, myself, you folks who would want to be in attendance for that as well, and then the, the kind of the deconversion team at Nationwide and John Hancock. We've worked with them numerous times, through Burnham Flower and through John Hancock and Nationwide Direct as well. So depending on who, whether you're through Burnham Flower, or whether you're through Direct, we're perfectly comfortable with that. With John Hancock, typically, no. There aren't generally any fees or anything along those lines associated with it. Same thing with Nationwide. The only thing with Nationwide is that they do, if you have it, I haven't seen your investment lineup specifically, so I can't speak to it for sure, but generally, they offer what's called a Nationwide fixed account, which is kind of offers a guaranteed rate of return of some sort. And in the event that Nationwide rule, if you want to move that money out, is they have, they do have what's called a market value adjustment, or an MBA, if you decide to move that money out. And the reason is that it's kind of an annuity-type-based product, where they're giving you a guarantee. So what they generally will do is we'll say, you can leave any money at Nationwide that is in the fixed account, and what they will do is typically transfer it over once a month for sixty months until it's all been moved over. That will avoid any kind of market value adjustment, so that there are no, no damage done to any of the employees as far as fees or costs to them.
Yeah, they have a twenty percent per year rule.
They do. Well, that's in the DC plan, the 457, they actually do it differently, they're different platforms. It's, they literally send over a check once a month for sixty months. It's ridiculous.
And one of the things that was brought to my attention very early on, in, in early 2017, was the, and some of this came from employees who recognized that they were paying, you know, far more than, than other markets would, would bear for the, you know, for the 457s and the 403Bs. So I think that's been widely known by, by many of the employees, especially in the fire and police unions who track this very closely. So, yeah, I, this is one of these things that we knew we were, we wanted to address at some point, and the time is now.
Yeah, yeah, and I think particularly with the, the transition from HR going to potentially an outsourced person, you know, there's, there's also more of a trend in the industry of consolidation of vendors. And the reason for that is kind of twofold. A, with multiple vendors, you have money spread across multiple different products and companies and different funds. You kind of lose some economies of scale when you have multiple vendors. You also have fiduciary responsibility as a board, and so you have the responsibility to kind of monitor the investment funds that are available, make sure that they're meeting their benchmarks and that they're performing well, that the fees are reasonable, doing the plan compliance and all of those sorts of things. So a fiduciary would be anybody who sits on this board, as well as anybody who has involvement in the day-to-day administration and involvement with the plan. So MERS is actually the sole plan fiduciary for our 457, our healthcare savings program, our defined contribution program. So that is something that you can basically wipe off on your plate, and MERS would take on that responsibility. We manage the funds, we oversee them, we hire and hire managers when we need to, we monitor the fees, make sure that they're reasonable. And in my experience, compared to, say, Nationwide or a John Hancock, our fees are generally about roughly a quarter to a third of what theirs are. So it's a pretty significant savings, which at the end of the day, results in a lot more money in your employees' pockets.
Are you saying a quarter to a third, or a savings of a quarter to a third?
A quarter to a third, so about sixty-seven to seventy-five percent.
So if it was a hundred dollars, now it's twenty-five?
Correct. Yeah, I would, I would say, and I have not seen your plans, so I don't know your fees specifically. We're happy to do an analysis for you if you, if you're interested in doing that, we have no problem doing that. You do have a little bit larger plans, so you may get some price breaks. But in my experience with John Hancock, their fees on average usually run somewhere around one and a half to one-point-seven-five. Nationwide's going to be roughly right around the same, right around one and a half, maybe a hair over that. On average, we usually come in under a half percent.
What is the ownership of MERS?
It's a, it's a nonprofit organization, there is no ownership of MERS.
So it's owned by the participating members?
It's an independent, public, not-for-profit organization that was, it's kind of an instrumentality of the state. We used to be part of the Office of Retirement Services in the state of Michigan up until nineteen ninety-seven, in which case we separated out from the state and became a voluntary retirement system. So very similar to, you know, like, it, it's not like the state of Michigan's retirement system. There are other voluntary systems throughout the country as well, but it would be where, you know, municipality chooses to come in where, as opposed to where they're mandated in, like the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, for example, or CalPERS, where everybody's in the same system. So our board governs the plan, our investments department basically answers to the board. They make all the decisions as it relates, or recommend, make the recommendations to the board as it relates to the type of funds we offer, the investment managers we choose. They monitor the fees and things along those lines as well. So there is no technical ownership of MERS, nor would there be investments into MERS. They're investing into funds just like they would in the open market, but they're more white-labeled type funds because they have investment managers that our investment department chooses. So there might be a, you know, large-cap equity index fund, which is basically the S and P 500, which we pretty much manage our, you know, internally ourselves. We have the ability to manage that index internally, so that's why we can do it a lot cheaper than hiring investment managers to do it.
Okay, any other questions? Where are we on the presentation timeline here?
Just about done here. Just wanted to address, there are, to answer your question fully, there are a few other one-time setup fees specifically with Paylocity. Again, the, the ongoing cost would be cost-neutral, but there would be some fees also for the online enrollment system, but that is already baked into the cost you see in your presentation. So very small additional one-time fees on top of what you're seeing here.
What, what slide are you on?
I, I wasn't, I was just kind of just answering the, the question that had come up. But moving forward, I'm sorry, the slide we'll be on will be slide thirteen. So the corporate benefit solutions difference, the stuff we bring to the table. We've already completed an ancillary plan review, that's the dental, vision, life, lung, disability. That's where we're showing that savings of plus or minus fifty thousand dollars, which we think is pretty significant for increased benefits. The medical plan review, we just haven't gotten to yet because we couldn't. Hopefully, literally any day, perhaps tomorrow or the next day, we'll have your renewal in hand. We will be actively going to market with that, especially looking at the retiree section to see if there's any way to reduce those costs, reduce that OPEB liability. That would be fantastic, but we won't know until we get that.
Yeah, the other thing that we want you to look at is, not in the realm of retiree healthcare, is the patchwork that we have right now for our retirees. Retiree healthcare, we're talking about the other ancillary benefits, vision, dental, et cetera. There's no, no cohesive pattern to it at all. We have some individuals with one level of co-pay, others with none, some that have to pay a certain percentage almost every month, some that pay nothing. It, it's a crazy quilt of, of payments and co-pays, and it's really-
Has to be rationalized. We are paying part B for some employees, part B of the Social Security.
Right.
Or Medicare, excuse me.
We're talking about non-bargain-for employees?
No, well, I'm talking about retirees who are out, who are out of the collective bargaining process, system. I mean, they're not-
All retirees are out of it, right?
They're, they're not, they're not covered anymore by collective bargaining agreements, obviously. But I think the way that we have been administering these benefits and the co-pays and the costs that we have had to pay and they've had to pay have been out of whack. And I'm not, it's, it goes both ways. I'm just looking for something that would provide a, a level of, of benefit that's financially fair to us and to them. The way, it's a, I mean, it's a sort of a crazy quilt of, of benefits-
Yeah.
-and payments, no other way to say it. And, and eight, almost each one of them has its own particular history, which is very odd.
We, we've seen that, and we've seen some very strange grandfathering on what we call your sloping, you know, the difference between couples, singles, families, inexplicable. We've even gone to Blue Cross for an explanation of that, they're scratching their heads. So there's a lot of digging to do into this, which will have to work very, very quickly on our end. But it's disconcerting when, when Blue is confused about your plan, let alone, you know, you being confused about your plan. So I agree with you, Kurt, there was certainly a lot of room to try to unquilt that quilt.
Do you have the eleven-by-seventeen document that is yellow, highlighted by line? Does he have that?
They, they, they have it.
Okay.
We, we gave it to you-
Yeah.
You sure you have it?
Yeah.
All right.
We gave it to you a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's amazed, but we'll, we have gone through that pretty extensively, but in order to, to further get into it, we're going to need to see the renewal and see how the new pricing comes out. But I think it'll, it'll be a luxury if when we get that. So flipping over to page fourteen, last slide, then we're done, let's start for any questions. We really think it's important, from our perspective, to employ a team approach on this. You have a lot of moving parts, and you have a lot of things that need to be addressed in very short orders, I mentioned on the front end. It would necessitate the approval of agreements with not only Corporate Benefit Solutions, a Business Associates Agreement, a HIPAA Agreement, a cordware, which is an online enrollment system, Acto HR, and Paylocity. The issues, those are the low, those are the immediate issues that need to be done prior to open enrollment, the stuff with MERS, the, the health savings program, the 457 and the 401A. While very low-hanging fruit and needs your attention, is not something that has to be done tomorrow in the sense of, of getting that done. The OPEB trust, yes, but those other things, they could be slightly backburnered, but I wouldn't even put them to backburner, I'd turn them to middle burner, because it's a lot of money on the table.
Can we, or should we be considering having a few active employees on this committee, transition team, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's always been the plan, is to involve the employees either through their official union reps or to put together- or to put together a a team of employees that would be walking through this process with us.
I think that'd be outstanding, especially if if you are considering making any benefit changes to the dental or the disability. I'm sure the respective unions would want to scrutinize those contracts, and we would be happy to walk through those with them. I think that's very important. But the problem that you have, if you want to call it a problem, is that the time is short. We do require collectively a June 1 go date. If you say, hey, yeah, we're going to go, we'll get you those those recommendation letters, those those opportunities to see how we we performed in the open market. Assuming that meets your satisfaction, our criteria is June 1. If we don't hit that June 1 deadline, we cannot guarantee that everything can be done in terms of open enrollment. That's 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 problematic. We do not want to fail. And and there's a lot of moving parts.
And if we do meet that June 1 date, you do guarantee?
I guarantee we'll be ready to go.
All right.
Yeah, I do. I do. I feel very confident in our team. I know from our perspective, we'll be ready to go. Lindsay has guaranteed they'll be ready to go. And and of course, ECHO HR will be working, they'll be working as as fast as they can to get up to speed as well. But yes, we'll be ready.
Steve, what, just along the the same lines, that question, what in in this timeframe and what has to get done? In your experience, what's what's the biggest concern on your part with this conversion?
Two two big concerns. One is getting the online enrollment system built and tested. So that's a that's about a 60-day process, which is why we have to move extremely fast on that. 60 days is is fast. And the other is the is the payroll system. So payroll system needs about 90 days to go. And so the earlier we can get a decision on that, the better. Lindsay could jump in headfirst and go and and make that transition. But payroll's a big deal. And we don't have to necessarily divorce yourselves from ADP on September 1. We can, you know, if that if that process lingers on, okay, we can do things manually on our end. We will handle all the heavy lifting along with Colleen's team. We can make that happen if everything's not quite in place. But the the most important piece of the equation is the online enrollment system, which we need that minimum 60 days to go.
So what I see is a potential roadblock is you have four or five different companies, and you get, well, that's not in, that's not my responsibility, and you get these interface problems, and it slows down.
Right. That's that's a great concern. It's a very valid concern. We have worked with other groups with Paylocity. We know that interface is very, very achievable and in very short order. It's not, we're not reinventing the wheel on that. So that's going to be a fairly easy process to to facilitate. I don't I don't anticipate any of that. And when it comes to that, the buck stops at my house. So if things aren't going right, I own that. We will make it right. To the extent that if we had to, if all the wheels fell off the wagon, we have the capability with Colleen's team to work behind the scenes and do things manually until they are correct, but we don't anticipate that happening.
So no program manager in Schaumburg, Illinois, that says, I have this, I have this target profitability, I'm not budging.
No, we have Lindsay. No, we we, that will not happen.
She's not in the office.
She's in the house. We'll find her. No, seriously, we we have the ability to make that happen. And 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 Paylocity is a can-do company, as are we. So we will, we I will own that entirely. Again, even if it gets to the point of a manual process, which it won't.
Okay, we have a question in the back.
Yeah, I was wondering how do you think that you're going to say, you know, you have the same plan across the board, how's that going to happen? I mean, are you going to pay your company or what?
No, it's an interesting question. It's not the 69 or 63, but to answer your question more succinctly, what you have is an HRA program. I don't know if you're familiar with how that works, but the HRA is a health reimbursement arrangement. And the township currently buys a $3,000 deductible plan. And then if someone uses that deductible or a portion of that deductible or things that are going towards that deductible, the township pays those bills. That's adjudicated automatically through Blue Care Network, and you get your explanation of benefits that says, this was your bill, but the township paid it, and you owe nothing. What what we're able to do, what we've done in several other instances, is raise the liability to the township, okay, with respect to the deductible. So the deductible could go from, say, 3,000 to 4,000 or 5,000. The the end experience to the employees is zero, still zero. So currently, if you go into the hospital and have a $50,000 surgery, you owe nothing. If the deductible is now 5,000, and you went into the hospital and had a $50,000 surgery, you would still owe nothing because the township assumes that liability. So what we've done is actuarially calculate how that additional liability would translate into dollars and cents to the township versus the premium savings. So the premium is lower, the liability goes up a little bit, but even when we we net that out, we're looking at about a $63,000 savings. So the the net result is you still have a plan that's fairly similar. There could be some small tweaks, but in terms of deductibles, coinsurances, big-ticket items, it's still zero across the board, which is great. For example, your office visit co-pay would be going down by 10 bucks, and your specialist co-pay might go up by 10 bucks. Things of that nature. There could be some small nuances. But for the most part, the plans are excruciatingly similar, and the township is able to save that money, which again, 20% of that is the employees' money. So it's a savings to the employees as well. Does that help? It's a complicated program. HRAs are not easy to digest or explain, but it's really sort of that smoke and mirror behind it. Behind the curtain is this larger deductible, but you don't feel that because your user experience is still zero.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? Any other questions? Anybody else from the public who's still here? Cindy?
I guess I'm concerned about payroll costs and portion of it. Anybody that we've been involved in a payroll conversion, it's very time-consuming, and it's very risky because you can't make mistakes with payroll. And for a savings of nothing between ADP and Paylocity, I'm wondering why we would go through this. I'm also concerned, again, I think it was Chuck who brought up about fire department payroll. I'm not real confident that an experience of one fire department, which may be volunteer, is comparing apples to apples. And that is a huge
As it turns out, it's a full-time department, right?
It's a huge, huge deal.
But your point is right. We had a mistake once on payroll for the fire department.
Correct.
And those employees didn't want to give the money back because they didn't have to. And it was a big, long, drawn-out discussion. In the end, the township paid a lot of it.
Well, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the fact that I don't really, I never really realized we had any issues with ADP.
We don't?
They they've done our ACA reporting. They've, all of it's been accurate. Anytime we need changes, our W2s, everything has been fine. So I am just saying that experience tells you a payroll conversion is not an easy thing.
I have two responses.
In in other words, what is broken that we're trying to fix?
Well, I think he addressed that. He addressed that. But I have two responses. First, on behalf of the board, thank you, Cindy, for volunteering to be on the city, the employee group working on this transition. I appreciate that. Obviously, you'd be very good to be on that group, and I'm and Kurt would be delighted to have you on that, I'm sure. But second,
She's got nothing going on.
Well, she's always got a lot invested in this. But secondly, more serious, is it conceivable then to take the fire department out of a conversion and look at that separately under a different timeframe? Is that conceivable? I guess I'd throw that out to
I guess I
our three elected full-timers here.
I I'm just very concerned.
Yeah, well, maybe that's a better way to go is just
We're looking at this June 1 deadline. We've never discussed this before internally, and now we're going to change payroll system. That that's huge.
Yeah, so maybe there's a way of finessing that.
Okay, so when the HR director leaves in October, who's going to maintain that 8 and 1/2 by 15 spreadsheet that's that converts all of this firefighter stuff by hand?
That would be a good question. I'd like to know that, too.
Let's hire somebody then, okay?
No, I mean, I, it doesn't matter the person. I'm talking about the system that they're going to enter it into.
And I'm telling you, the system is going to change this year, whether we like it or not, so.
Well, and we've never talked to ADP about the changes. I mean, I I just think this is premature to rush to a June 1 conversion when the stakes are so high with payroll.
Steve, I made a great concern, and thank you. I will say that while Lindsay has had experience with one municipality, Paylocity has had numerous municipalities across the country, so we'll get you some of those, some of those examples. And specifically with implementation, this is a good concern as well. I don't want to address that specifically with Lindsay.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to implementation. While it's not a non-event, we do try to make it as concise as possible. You can actually convert payroll providers from a company like ADP over to Paylocity in as few as three weeks as far as payroll conversion. We do a full data extraction, so we can extract your data from your current ADP system and input it into Paylocity. You would work with a dedicated implementation consultant to walk you through every step of the product. And that's where Steve comes into the 90 days because there would be other things being set up. But the core payroll functionality can be taken care of in a three-week conversion time. And that does include any sort of trainings and auditing. Of course, we want to make sure accuracy. That is our main goal, to make sure that your payroll is accurate. So we do ask for audits, and we give you your data, and we go through several, several audits to make sure that that's there. As far as taxes, if you were to convert mid-quarter, we would tie up any loosens. And then moving forward, we take over the tax responsibilities, and you would have one W2 at the end of the year.
So the only person in this room that actually has expertise, I I don't think those comments were appropriate. I think you 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 attacked her, and you should not have done.
No, I wasn't attacking her at all.
I don't think that was appropriate, but I used to work
Do you consider I was attacking you?
I worked for a company that did payroll time. It was, it did, we did time and attendance software, and it's not, it is not trivial.
I'm not saying it's trivial.
She's right. I have been part of conversions before. It is not trivial.
I wasn't being trivial. I actually thought I made a proposal to think about fire department taking them off in a separate track.
To reduce risk.
I have great confidence in Cindy. I've worked with her. I don't want to go into this. It's 10-10. But that is not a comment that is, I'll leave it at that.
I think it was, so just concentrate, when you talk tomorrow to your home office, is the fire department is the big deal. And if they're based in Illinois, their fire departments are probably more complex than us because Illinois is the land of rules and regulations and expensive things in government. So they probably have something that'll best us as a benchmark.
Definitely, and I'm happy to get that information for you. I'm also happy to get any sort of customization. If you have your rules and your regulations, and you want to see how that would work in our specific software, I'm happy to talk to programmers directly about that and have that conversation with my team out of Chicago. So we're happy to do anything like that. But one last thing I will say is, in regards to payroll, just to ensure the accuracy again, we do test the payroll first. So we are going to ensure that your payroll with Paylocity would match your payroll with ADP moving forward. We take a file transfer that you're currently doing with ADP. We take that file, we have a converter. You would push that through to Paylocity and get the same end result. So we want to make sure that what you got in Paylocity is that same report that you got in ADP with your last payroll.
To appointment line, be able to see that payroll matched exactly, to help avoid
But but Of course, you remember, you can extract what you want, improve what you want.
You know, I I definitely understand your concerns. I think I have a great team for implementation that really do have this down to a science, that really do work hard to try to do this 100%.
I I do, but I understand, I I just talked to them with the S and X. Last year, they picked up all the data.
Okay.
Still
Yeah, I mean, I I think I think these are valid concerns that need to be discussed often.
Still, I I'm still, I'm not clear what what is broken about ADP that this would fix?
Well, the way I understand it, I think in order for this whole, their, for their whole thing to be integrated, they they want to work with Paylocity rather than ADP. I think that the way they've described it, I think Paylocity seems to be a more innovative, nimble, quicker-response company that these guys have a have a relationship with. ADP seems to be more like, you know, like AT&amp;T, you know, they're they're or they're the big, they're the big dog that's been around for a long time, and maybe they don't move around as fast.
You just approved a contract with AT&amp;T.
Well, see, there you go.
It's primarily the integration issue that we don't get with with ADP. And as Cindy pointed out, ADP has their own system. It just doesn't play ball with anything else. So having the having the independent silos here allows us to be more succinct and get things done in a more timely fashion. Plus, I guarantee that you'll be more satisfied with reporting that you'll be able to get.
So but if there were mistakes that cost the township money, you would reimburse the township for those mistakes?
I didn't say that.
Well, nor will I, I don't think ADP would say that either.
I I think the the critical event is is
Or AT&amp;T.
is Joanne retiring here. Because, you know, if you think about the flow of information, everything right now goes through Joanne, all the benefits, all the payroll, et cetera, et cetera. We're losing that important part of the information flow. And and we're choosing, we've got a couple options now. Well, what can we do? Can we hire a person? It'll take a person two years to get up to speed on everything of that job. Or we can start to outsource these functions. And with the outsourcing is going to have to come automation. Because this information that's flowing through Joanne right now, a lot of it is being done manually. We're going to have to put some of that burden on the employees to make it a self-service model as opposed to going to Joanne with everything. So I think that's the, to me, that's the key thing, is Joanne's retiring. We're moving towards more of a self-service, outsourced model. Now, we, I I I think we've raised some enough valid concerns that I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do this. I think we just have to be very thoughtful about the order that we do it and the timing that we do it. Maybe we postpone things for a year or six months. I don't know. But I think eventually we have to get to a self-service model. I I guarantee the place you work, you don't you don't go to your HR director with all of your forms and all that stuff. You go online, you plug it in, and all gets done.
I've got enough savings to cover the golf course here.
They just We just found the golf course money. All right, okay. Anybody else on the board? Anybody else in the public? All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Item G Supervisor and Trustee Comments. Let me just, I'll start off by trying to answer Mr. Carter's questions from three hours ago. With respect to the firefighter firefighter pension dispute with the city, we expect a resolution before the end of the month. We have been, the lawyers have been in contact regarding a settlement agreement, and the city is continuing to have internal discussions with pension, their pension attorney, their bond counsel, because that's going to be very important to what happens here. I can't divulge too much. And I believe that they will be prepared to make a decision publicly in the next couple days, next couple weeks. Okay? Park, we continue to have discussions with the city on that. Next, we are having a special meeting next week, May 15, because this is a very busy month. We've got a lot of stuff going on. So we are having a meeting next week, and we will be taking up the, a review of the concession agreement, the proposed concession agreement between PARA, the authority that might be created, and PARK. So this is, this is going to be our analysis of a contract that we're not going to be a party to. But, you know, there's been a desire to look it over and see what recommendations we can make with that. But I continue to talk to the city people about it and with PARK. The document that we looked at a couple weeks ago, there's been, you know, several changes made based on board input. And the city's got a couple other issues that they need to go over with us. And I think we're close to putting something before the board and the and the city commission. OPEB and the pension issue, I mean, you saw a lot of this tonight. That's why, what's one of the reasons why these guys were here tonight. We are in the process of working on a trust fund that would be established. We are looking to do that in in June. And, you know, almost every day, we're doing something on, in the issue of of OPEB and pension. I look at it as a three-legged stool. You have, in order to address the the pension issue and the OPEB issue and to stay in state compliance, it's going to require us as management to come up with better benefit programs and services for the employees. It's going to require the employees to possibly give up more in terms of coverage. give up more in terms of coverage or what they pay into their plans. Okay? And that's all done through collective bargaining, by the way. Thirdly is the public. We're going to have to do something to address the OPEB issue and the pension, pension payments that we're going to have to make over the next 10 years. And they are substantial. And without more revenue in this township, we are, we are in a very serious financial situation without more revenue. And that's just the bottom line.
Come back on the 22nd. I got a presentation that will address that exact issue.
Okay.
Five-dollar cover at the door.
There's our-
Goes in the golf course fund. As far as other stuff from me, we are going to meet next week. I've already told you about the park concession agreement. We'll go over that. We got a bunch of other things going on as well. Budget adjustments from Cindy and some other things. Bob?
Me?
Yeah, Bob, you, Bob.
So I, so I want to come back to Bill, what Bill Pratt's request was. So, so basically, so I sat on the ZBA for 12 years prior to being on the planning commission and then the ZBA. I don't know what the count was, but we had a number of fences and people wanted to put up privacy fences. And there was not a single time I can recall where we turned it down. So what ends up happening is the resident ends up having to pay a fee and it gets approved anyway. So I think Bill Pratt was right. The planning commission talked about this in detail, that we need a new, a new look at this ordinance. So with the board's permission, the planning commission would like to explore this and come back with some recommendations.
Is that a Laura Haw assignment or is that a Kevin Bennett assignment?
I think it's a Laura assignment, isn't it, Kevin?
I mean, she would, she has the hands on, she goes to the meetings, right? I mean, she knows what's going on. So I think she would have the, the, the most immediate level of input from, from all the players. I think she can work with you guys on recommendations and then have it all cleaned up by Kevin.
Okay. So it's, it's late. I, I'd like to talk about it more because I don't agree with what he said. I, I think some privacy, Pratt-
Who's he?
Pratt was up there, right? I don't agree with what he said about making it not, I like the idea of coming to the ZBA because at least if a neighbor objects, they have a voice. Well, why don't, why don't we let- Six-foot privacy fence. In fact, in better neighborhoods, they don't allow fences. They're ugly. So we need to think about it. And I can tell you, in the nineties, not one was approved. It changed. So there was this, things have changed, I know. It's not the nineties anymore. Right. So people want, I guess they want to be isolated from their neighbors more than in the nineties. In, in the number of people that live in neighborhoods that have HOAs, which is a substantial amount of our population, it's a moot point. They can't have fences anyway. But the thing is, you know, the residents get charged. And the planning commission has come, has come to the board of trustees and asked, can we study this and come back with some recommendations? Well, I think it got kicked off by an email I sent out about a month ago. No kidding. We've been talking about this for a long time. Okay. Well, that's when it came up, I guess, got exposed at that time. It came out of the, all right. So it's late, but-
Okay. Well, I'll talk to Laura about that. Bob?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Gary?
I would like to put the sign ordinance back on the agenda. We're already seeing a, an abundance of rummage sale, a certain painter in town who's putting signs all over in inappropriate places, illegal places. And it looks awful. We talked a little bit about it before. We kind of let it go. I'd like to bring it back up and say, this is something we got to talk about in a future meeting.
Well, I would ask that Kevin resubmit his opinion letter on this issue that he issued last year. If you want to update it, feel free. But I mean, unfortunately, Gary, we're, our hands are pretty much tied by federal-
Constitution.
Precedent.
Well, then we have to enforce the rules that are in place today.
In other words, take everybody's signs away all the time.
Absolutely.
That annoying constitution got in the way again.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, you know, the problem, the problem, Gary, I agree with you. I, I do not want this place to turn into, you know, some of our other neighboring communities that are inundated with lawn signs because it's, it looks terrible. The, the balancing act is always between the 80% of terrible signs and the guy who's doing a garage sale, you know. And that's what we have to wrestle with. And unfortunately, Kathy Pumphrey left, but we've had a lot of internal discussions about that. But, you know, Kevin, if you would like to just update your memo from last year, that would, might at least be a starting point. Gary? I mean, Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Again, I want to thank you and Mark for your work on the, on all of the benefit programs and packages that are out there. I think it's necessary. It's proactive. It's showing that we're, we're committed to, to providing good services to the employees and to the, to the public and trying to do it in a cost-effective way. I also want to thank you for saying that there's going to be input from the employees, from both the bargaining units and the non-bargaining unit people. And, and taking all that into consideration and making our decision, I, I commend for that. Thank you very much.
I'll sit here. Thanks.
Jack?
You have two since we might as well keep going. First, I want to indicate that I hope that we will soon address the issue of our aging fire apparatus equipment. All of these issues we've talked about are important. That's just as important. And we've got to get to that. I want to do a shout out to my neighbor, Coach Bob, who volunteered and patched the holes on our street. And that's the kind of people we have in Plymouth Township. When they see a problem, they'll fix it. So I want to mention those two things. Thanks.
Chuck? OPEB and pension legacy in the audit. Who is making sure that our agreements with the city of Plymouth or, and/or negotiations are in that document? Who's we? You, you are? Cindy?
Yeah.
OPEB and pension legacy costs, the agreements we have with the city of Plymouth must be in the audit. And I wanted to know who is making sure of that.
What do you mean must be in the audit?
Must. In other words, it needs to be a footnote or something that we have an agreement-
Oh, Plant Moran takes care of that.
I know, but making sure Plant Moran's doing it.
Oh, yeah, they-
Because I, I did call them.
Oh, were you the one?
Yeah, I'm the one. But I want to make sure we're covering the circle.
Okay. No, that's fine. They told me one of the board members called. And I kind of put my money on you, Chuck. But, um, okay.
I want you to know that it wasn't me because I have such trust in you, Cindy, that I would not call.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, but-
All right. You're, you're monitoring it.
We'll give them what they need and they know.
Okay. You've got the agreements or the tentative agreement. Next question is, might as well stay up there because this one affects you. This is my favorite dispatch, the city of Plymouth dispatch share for 2014, 2015, and 2016. It's about $30,000.
Correct.
When do we think we're going to get paid?
As I've said before-
I know.
They're, they're, they're contesting the way we've used the formula in the past. And we needed to go back and there's three, three pieces to the formula. And we went back in the building, the building department and got the certificate of occupancy so we can kind of prove the population. They're doing the same thing. I talked to the finance director over there. And we're supposed to meet and some personal things came up on his side and it was canceled. But we're going to meet after the township's audit is complete.
After the township's audit is what?
Is complete. So as soon as the-
So August?
The audit, no. As soon as the auditors leave our premises, which should be within about two weeks.
Oh, that, you mean, okay, the onsite completion, not the doc-
Not the document. And then, because then I will be free.
All right. So I'll shut up until-
No, I will be free.
Till that happens. But I think it's an indication of how things get-
And I, I knew this question might come up. So I called over there again today to reconfirm our understanding that we will sit down and meet with them. And they've been gathering the documents to supposedly prove-
Population changes negligible from 14, 15, 16.
Right.
Probably less than 50 people moved into Township of Plymouth.
On our, on our side, you're correct. There's not a huge swing.
Minor.
But-
I think it's an indication of, you know, they need to help us out.
It's nearing the top of the to-do list.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because we need money, right? I just heard that. This one's a simple one. The soccer fields at Unisys, who manages those or what are they here? What, is, is that something we're involved in or it's?
Let me answer that because I'm meeting with Sarah on Thursday to talk about the soccer field situation. So how about if I-
Yeah.
Bring back a report very quickly, maybe next Tuesday.
I assume they're temporary because-
Our soccer situation.
Yeah, I would, I would also email both of you. I mean, feel free to email Steve Anderson at the city, at the city as well.
So it might be related to the city?
Pardon me?
It, it might be a city league.
Why don't we wait till I come back?
Yeah, he's going to investigate.
Why don't we let, why don't we let Jack come back with his results? But I will tell you that at some point, you're going to have to talk to Steve Anderson. And then he'll, he'll, he, he will also provide some answers.
Do I have the floor still?
Sure.
I want to commend trustee Dorchevitz for his leadership on the golf course committee. He did a fantastic job. And as we know, there were some moments when there were unsettled feelings. But I thought it went really well. And I really do, not, not facetiously as I was commenting earlier, seriously respect how you led that group. So thank you very much.
Okay. Public comments? They're still here. Some of them, a lot, some of them are getting-
They're sleepy bears.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman.
I move we adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.